We'll bring this meeting for Peterborough City Council for October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five to order. The first item of business is our land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that we're on the treaty and the traditional territory of the Mississauga, the Ashenabik. We offer our gratitude to the First Peoples for their care for and the teaching about our earth and our relations. May we honor those teachings. The next item of business is thirty seconds of personal reflection. Those that are able, if you could remove your caps, send rise for the singing of the national anthem. The council for the city of Peterborough recognizes the principles contained in our constitution and the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. The next item on our agenda this evening is a very special presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gathered here today in council chambers with a mixture of pride and reflection to honor a remarkable individual who dedicated her life to enhancing the vibrancy of our community of Peterborough. It is with deep respect and profound gratitude that we posthumously recognized Ellen Stewart with the Canadian Parks and Recreation Association's Award of Merit. Ellen, a name synonymous with integrity, kindness, and visionary leadership, was born into a family rooted in the ethos of our community. Her father, Joe, a celebrated member of the Peterborough District Sports Hall of Fame, and her mother, Joan, instilled her values that Ellen carried throughout her illustrious career with the city of Peterborough. Over her twenty-nine years of service, Ellen exemplified the spirit of public service. Her endeavors in the early two thousand, particularly her leadership of the youth portfolio, brought to life the downtown youth space, a network of drop-in programs that became a cornerstone for young people seeking connection and empowerment. By steering the youth council and collaborating with city council and community members on the youth commission, Ellen gave a voice to our youth, guiding the direction of the city with their input and ensuring that their futures would be remarkably bright. Her role as the game's general manager for the two thousand and twenty-two Ontario Fifty-five-plus seniors games stands as a testament to her exceptional organizational skills and leadership. Despite the immense challenges presented by the pandemic, Ellen's unwavering commitment resulted in an event that was nothing short of spectacular. This gathering, this gathering of over one thousand participants not only delivered economic benefits to our region, but also reinforced the strong sense of community that Ellen always fostered. Perhaps Ellen's most enduring legacy is a role as a mentor role model for countless youth in the city of Peterborough. Her influence, her influence extended beyond programs and events. She inspired her colleagues, peers, and the younger generation, embodying the very essence of a remarkable community leader. And Ellen Stewart, the Peterborough community not just had a leader, but a beacon of hope and inspiration. Her work enriched our lives and set a standard for dedication and excellence in parks and recreation. Today, as we honor her with this prestigious award, let us reflect on her contributions and the lasting impact that she had. Ellen's spirit lives on the lives she touched and the community she helped to build. Lois Tuffin, former editor-in-chief of Peterborough This Week and current founder of Volunteer Peterborough, said in her nomination letter to the committee, quote, "The last time I saw Ellen Stewart, she was jubilant about retiring after a rewarding career at the city of Peterborough. I never forgot the energy she exuded that night. It matched her enthusiasm. She delivered on every project I saw her master." Ellen's funeral was packed with young moms, former coal workers, and seniors she made to feel like a million bucks. You could barely move among them or hear yourself over the lovely community commentary between them that this is a legacy of a life well-lived. Haley Etter, Director of Community Health Lakelands, remarked that Ellen was also a strong believer in inter-agency of collaboration as she recognized that youth ally organizations are stronger when we work together. As a result, Peterborough Public Health and City Recreation Division partnered together to achieve many common goals. As an example, Ellen was the leading partner in several initiatives like the Public Health Locally Implementing the Healthy Kids Community Challenge. Ellen's focus was on promoting healthy behaviors, including increasing physical activity and limiting screen time for children and youth in our community. Ryan Albright, the senior coordinator with the Ministry of Sport commented in his letter of support that Ellen's commitment to fostering community engagement and delivering the first post-pandemic Ontario Night Fifty-five-plus Games was truly commendable. Her work with the Ontario Fifty-five-plus Summer Games not only highlighted the city of Peterborough as a premier destination for recreational sports tourism, but also strengthened community bonds and encouraged active living amongst all our residents. I would like to express my gratitude to all the individuals who contributed letters of support and to Ellen's colleagues who shared their heartfelt endorsements for her nomination for this most prestigious award. Thank you, and in many ways cherish and remember the wonderful legacy of Ellen Stewart. Accepting this Award of Merit on behalf of Ellen Stewart's family is C.D. Corner, Ellen's niece, and I would ask her to come forward. And if mayors of members of council would like to enjoin me in a inner horseshoe here, we'll make this presentation. Back to chair. Sort of here, good. The next item of business we have is approval of the September third, two thousand and twenty-five minutes. Somebody like to move them? Counselor Bieber, Counselor Hakey, comes with questions, we'll go to a vote. And then it's carried. Is there any decrees of community interest at this time? Counselor, Counselor Hakey, please.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Yes, I'd like to declare on report M O A I R twenty-five dash zero zero eight. It's the lease involving a fuel depot at the airport as the applicant is a client of mine.
Okay, truly noted. We'll separate that one out, Counselor Hakey. Any other, any other decrees at this time? Before we start with the delegations, I do have a quick statement. As the Chair of this meeting, it's my obligation to ask delegations to speak to the matter which is on the agenda tonight, which is the question of the heritage considerations related to the GE property. The issue of the demolition permit is a subject of the provincial regulatory requirements under the Building Code Act administered by the chief building official. I will give some latitude this evening to residents because this is an important form for our community, but I would also ask questions, et cetera, to stay on topic. I understand the concerns of many residents who worry about the demolition plan and the disposal of potentially hazardous materials if a demolition permit is granted. I had many chats with citizens in Peterborough on this topic at the farmer's market this past Saturday. That's why I've asked the Honorable Todd McCarthy, Minister of the Environment, Conservation of Parks, and MPP Dave Smith to meet with me regarding the ministry's role in managing the GE site. Questions and concerns about this important demolition and its impact on our community are vitally important to all, but environmental controls on the property are outside of the jurisdiction of the municipality and not within the scope of issuing a demolition permit under the Ontario Building Code. GE Verona and the provincial government, specifically the Minister of the Environment, Conservation of Parks, will be responsible for addressing environmental concerns. So first up this evening on the delegation list will be Mark Bullock, and then we'll go to the delegations on the demolition of one oh seven Park Street North. Mr. Bullock, please, are you here? And you're speaking to the City Peterborough Holdings, Inc., the two thousand and twenty-four annual report. Mr. Bullock, please, if I could have your name and address for the public record, and you can commence, sir.
My name is Mark Bullock. I live at eight eight four Valley View Drive, Peterborough. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item eleven H, the two thousand and twenty-four annual report of the City of Peterborough Holdings, Inc., known commonly as COFI. The COFI report is a public document and can be read online at the City of Peterborough website by anyone who is interested. I want to talk about it today because I think it deserves more attention, dealing as it does with matters of some importance. I'm referring particularly to the report's description of renewable generation facilities owned by Peterborough Utilities, Inc., a division of COFI. Peterborough Utilities, Inc. owns and operates a fleet of twenty-seven renewable generation facilities, six hydroelectric generating stations, nineteen solar facilities, and two biogas plants. These have an aggregate capacity of forty-eight point three megawatts. Production from these facilities in two thousand and twenty-four was approximately one hundred and sixty-three gigawatt hours, enough to meet the needs of approximately twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three households, or sixty percent of the households in Peterborough. I'll repeat that because I think it will come as a surprise to a lot of people. The company which we collectively own generates enough clean, emissions-free electricity to provide power to sixty percent of the households in Peterborough. Hydroelectric capacity accounts for fifty-eight percent of the total, and hydro production was about eighty-two percent of overall power production in two thousand and twenty-four. Solar facilities include the ten megawatt Lily Lake facility as well as fifteen ground mount facilities north of Peterborough and three rooftop solar facilities. The total capacity of the solar facilities is eighteen point four megawatts. Peterborough Utilities, Inc. has carried out significant work to maintain and expand the capacity of its hydroelectric facilities. It is investigating the viability of additional solar battery energy stories, storage, and hydroelectric projects which would qualify for contracts under the Independent Electricity System Operator's Competitive Procurement Program. Renewable energy development pipe by PUI has been very successful. Generation facilities have fed clean electricity into the grid and provided the city with a large and consistent stream of income. An additional benefit should also be noted in passing. Between May and November two thousand and twenty-four, approximately seven hundred sheep and lambs were raised on the grounds of the Lily Lake solar facility. The site also hosts honeybee hives. The success of the current system does need to be measured against what remains to be done. This is set out in Climate Change Action Plan two point oh, which was adopted by council on April seventh of this year. The plan calls for an increase in solar capacity from eighteen megawatts to twenty-seven megawatts by two thousand and fifty. That is a fifty percent increase in the present solar capacity of Peterborough Utilities, Inc. Climate Change Action Plan two point oh also calls for the city to promote the adoption of solar power by private homes and businesses. Specifically, it calls for the municipal government to work with suppliers, utilities, and the community to provide incentives for solar adoption. Climate Change Action Plan two point oh also says that all municipal buildings which use electricity should be supplied with solar generating capacity. This COFI report is a reminder that renewable electricity works. It is technically feasible, and it is financially viable. Peterborough's Climate Change Action Plan two point oh points to a future in which electricity plays an increasing role as we heat our homes with it, power our vehicles with it, and generate it in growing quantities from emission-free renewable sources. If our children and grandchildren are to inherit a livable world, something similar to this and much more needs to happen everywhere. Our part is going to be small, but it need not be insignificant. Among Ontario municipalities, there is no reason why Peterborough cannot be a leader in this area. The actions which council can take toward this end are clearly set out in Climate Action Plan two point oh, and council should implement that plan as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Bullock. Any questions? Mr. Bullock, you could be very helpful if you wrote the Ministry of Energy on our behalf and asked them to look at increasingly return on renewables, particularly for run of the river. I'll give you an example. The new S M R, the Small Modular Reactor, and the refurbishment of the other nuclear fleet, that will, they will need to have to recover costs there between two fifty and two sixty per megawatt. So we would like to see renewables maybe in the range of one seventy-five to two hundred so COFI could get returned back on its investment and provide cash flow for future investments that you just talked about. So I'll leave it to you to write that letter.
Very good.
Thanks so much. Next, next presenter, Sue James, please, Sue. Welcome, Sue. Great to see you again. And I know you'll keep your remarks around the framework, right, that we, in terms of the heritage in the building, so.
I will certainly try.
And I'll give you latitude for all your work that you've done on, on W S I B cases. So if we could have your name and address for the public record, and you have five minutes to make a presentation.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Leo and city council members. My name is Sue James, and I reside at seventeen forty-two Ravenwood Drive in Peterborough. I've come here tonight to speak in opposition to the proposed demolition of the center block of buildings at one oh seven Park Street, former site of GE Canada. This is deeply personal, not only to me, but to the entire community and network of workers and families who have been impacted by the dark and rarely spoke about underbelly of the lethal legacy of industrial chemicals and toxins. As a lifelong Peterborough resident, I grew up in the working-class family and neighborhood in the city's south end and would follow in my father's footsteps and begin work at General Electric in nineteen seventy-four. After forty years on the job and the loss of my father to lung cancer in nineteen ninety-six and witnessing hundreds of my former work colleagues become ill and die, it prompted me to join with other advocates in the community relative to occupational disease who shared the same passion and purpose to understand why. Our mission was to aid and assist W S I B claims in navigating a complex compensation system where the burden of proof lies on the worker and the family's shoulders, to produce a map and a comprehensive study showing the level of exposures and carcinogens on the site. Over the years, GE has consistently denied any wrongdoing or fault for the thousands of workers who have died and become ill due to occupational disease. There is plenty of documentation on this that I could provide regarding it. To commemorate and acknowledge the lives of these workers and families, their lived experiences, their memories, and the impact and history of the industrial era, I am proud to say that on June first of this year, with the help of many generous donors, we were able to erect a monument to honor all who worked in industry. We also hope that it would preserve the worker historic legacy and serve as a precautionary principle for generations today and into the future. I believe GE must have a penchant for tearing down buildings and fencing off land. In two thousand and twelve, listed as the Caribou Project, GE would begin demolishing many of the outbuildings or standalone structures with the promise to move some of those lines into the center block. Over the following years, they would demolish and tear down building three, four, five, seven, seven, eight, nine, nine, eight, fifteen, seventeen, eight, nineteen, all located on the north end of the site adjacent to Wolf Street. Stewart Street Lab was left, was also demolished. The only building left standing standalone was building thirteen, steam plant and the smokestack, which is included in this demolition package along with the center block. The smokestack at that time was deemed to, was deemed to be demolished a few years ago, but was found to contain many hazardous chemicals and toxins. By demolishing the center block, they will be destroying the final piece of evidence of the toxic and lethal legacy of workers' history. This only adds to the question of why. General Electric has, as a corporation, has a long and somewhat sordid past regarding environmental impacts to many of their sites across North America, and most importantly, the well-being of their workers. In most cases, you will see that cost and profits are the measures weighed and most important to their shareholders rather than supporting control measures to ensure worker health and safety. I would further note that the importance of decommissioning any structure of this size and impact it would have on the neighboring community should be carefully questioned and thought out. I've read through the entire one hundred and fifty-four-page document entitled Heritage Impact Assessment Report and have concerns and observation. It all sounds good on paper, but the devil is in the details. I would refer council.
I'll let you somebody to finish your thought there, Sue.
Oh. Is that it? Okay.
But take a moment and finish your, your thought that you were articulating there.
Okay, I'm just looking at, I'll skip through some of that. I, it was pertaining to the sections in the hundred and fifty-four-page document. And I think it's important that, one of the things they say is that GE Vernova does not have continued use or business case for future expanded industrial operations, when in fact, GE Vernova offers a wide range of products across gas, wind, hydrogrid solutions, gas turbines, power, so on and so forth, much of what we built here over the last hundred years. So in conclusion, I would encourage and urge the mayor and council to take a step back, reflect upon the implication, implications of this proposal, to look into and research and engage community participation in discussions pertinent to this proposal as we, the community and taxpayers, will undoubtedly be impacted one way or another.
Sue, thanks very much for your presentation. Counselor, we all have a question.
To the Chair, to Ms. James, thank you very much for being here, Sue. My question has to do because of your forty years and my thirty-eight and a half years at GE. I've tried to impress upon my council mates to talk to them or tell them the story of General Electric. Could you please tell my council mates exactly as you walked through GE like I did, what went on in that building and what's going to transpire when these buildings come down?
Well, I mean, we could walk through that plant, having worked there for all those years. My father worked there for thirty-six years. So the smell that he brought home on his clothing was reminiscent. It was familiar to me. So when I started work at GE, I went in there and I thought, oh, this has got to be safe. It smells like my dad. And I was quite happy to be there. So any worker that worked there long-term can talk about walking through the main plant, that, that whole central block. And no, we could be blindfolded and you would know exactly where you were because of the smell, the sounds, and what was in that. One person described it to me as an industrial mall with welding, machining, painting, degreasing, you name it. It was throughout the entire plant. So it is a memory. It's deeply, as I said, it's deeply personal to me that we restore and keep that history. I understand the buildings are falling down, but that's not our fault. That was the person that owned that building, which is GE. They didn't keep up the maintenance and they let it go vacant. So my question is, what do we do with this? You know, we have lots of brownfields in the city where we can't reconstruct. Another note is that a lot of the contaminants were in the building and affected the workers, but I noted in this report that they would take it down to the concrete base. Well, there's a lot of contaminants under that base. So what do we do? And it's not the responsibility of Peterborough taxpayers to hold that responsibility for reme- responsibility for remediation.
Through his worship to Sue, I know that you've been active, certainly helping the workers with WSIB claims, but there is another cohort of people and that's the people that I met and talked to when we had the intake clinic. And that's the people in the neighborhood that told me stories of miscarriages, deformed children and people that have died by industrial disease. Is these, these people too, you probably, they have reached out to you with their stories. Could you please convey that to council about exactly the site at 107 Park Street and what it had to do with the surrounding neighborhood?
Yeah, it, it could be extraordinary. We know through history that, that smokestack, we were coal, we used coal to heat the buildings. Back in the past, it was known in the neighborhood, don't hang your washing out on certain days because that's going to spew out and, and go onto your clothing. So what else was spewing out? You know, the fumes, the gases, the vapors. And all of those people that live in that block and actually blocked to the north, south, west, east, would have felt that over the years and been impacted. I talk about a family member that lived on, I believe it was Patterson Street, and their son was an athlete, played for the Peterborough Peps or was going to. He died at seventeen of lung cancer, which was assumed by the family and rightfully so, that it was the asbestos that his dad, who worked at GE, brought home and he was exposed to. So the impact is phenomenal to the neighborhood and that's what I worry about is, has there been enough remediation thoughts on how to remediate and decommission a site of that size? And what is that impact going to, again, do to the neighbors?
Thank you very much for being here tonight, for your work with the workers and certainly the widows and the widowers of the workers of the city of General Electric. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Counselor Work, please.
Mayor Lille, thank you and through you to Ms. James, thank you so much for coming and speaking. I would love to hear the rest of what you had to say. I was working way back in, right after I moved to Peterborough with someone named Jeremy Malloy and his father was a professor at Trent and he wrote a big book on the effects of the effects that these industrial sites have on the neighborhoods. And one of the things that he documented was the rates of mental health issues, violence, aggression, addiction, anxiety, things like this. That might not be readily seen as being attached to what's happening at General Electric. Are you aware of this kind of data that shows that there's higher rates of these issues?
That specific data, I, you know, for violence and addictions and that, I'm not, I wouldn't say that I have read that thoroughly. I don't doubt it's there. I mean, I have read many, many documents put out by the OPRC that talked about all of the industries in Peterborough at that time, listing all the agencies, the toxins, carcinogens. So I have little doubt the effect that those sorts of things would happen. I mean, you didn't work in GE and not have an employee assistance program and that were quite active, probably for those purposes.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Lille, we're being faced with this idea that, you know, this is a positive thing, there's action happening on the site. And I don't buy it personally. I believe that this is a step in the direction of GE removing themselves from having any liability of, of what, what has happened or is happening there on that site. Do you agree with that? And also would you be, I guess, could you give us a sense around the table? Because we are looking at a demolition request. And to me, if the demolition means that it's just going to remain empty and, you know, the liability is going to be removed and our chances of having anything meaningful done there are even more limited. What would be a positive way that General Electric could act, could act on this site, given its history and given that it takes up a big portion of the city in the heart of the city? What would be a, what would be a different approach that you or you and your community who have been so affected by this would want to see happen?
Sue, please.
Oh, it's very, I absolutely agree with you. And some of the options that I would look at is, don't tear down, build, refurbish. You know, we were economically, Peterborough was, you know, in the hot seat because of the industries that were here. So why, I don't believe that site would be any good for, you know, digging and building, you know, seventeen-story-high apartment building or, and who would want to work at it with nuclear, right? Like right there on their doorstep, the nuclear operation. So if we could somehow sustain it, if GE would sustain it rather than demolish, it would also respect the former workers and their families that worked there and gave their lives.
Thank you. My final question, Mayor Lille, through you, is in terms of respect, in terms of respect for the people that have been so affected by the site, are you in favor of the staff recommendation from this report, which wasn't voted on in the affirmative last week, but the staff recommendation to say, to say two things? That the first thing is that the entire package, including the center buildings, go to our architectural advisory committee for review? So we can, we can hear their, from the subject matter experts if there is any heritage significance to those buildings that are going to be demolished? And B, that a third party that the city hires review the, the report that was done by General Electric to sort of look at it from an unbiased way and then to look at it in an unbiased way? Is that something you'd be in favor of, those staff recommendations?
Absolutely, I would be in favor of a judicial approach in that, you know, look for yourself what can be kept, what can, should be demolished. And I don't believe any of those. Those buildings stood for, you know, over a hundred years, but they've been neglected. And that is by the owner of that property. So I, I firmly believe that we should, that I ask and urge council and mayor to investigate this further before making a decision. Like I said, once the cat is out of the bag, there's no going back. And we'll be left with the fallout.
Counselor Baldwin, please, and Counselor La Chica. Counselor Baldwin.
Your worship, my question will be for staff, thank you.
Okay, Counselor La Chica, please.
Thank you, through you, your worship. To Sue, thank you for sharing tonight from your heart and from your life experience and emphasizing, as you spoke so well, to the heritage piece here. It's not just, it's a complex heritage and a complex history. There, there's a social justice piece as well as, as the, the history and heritage of what went on for a hundred and thirty years. So thank you for pointing that out. My question is, for those who would say that was then and this is now, those, at that time, there was suffering and loss and, and loss of life and such a threat, what would you say to those folks who would say, it's done? And what is the threat now? Can you explain what you think that disturbing what's there now, those vacant buildings, would, would bring in terms of any new threat? Can you, can you just talk about that for a moment? Thank you.
Sue, please.
That's a, that's difficult. You know, when you say that was then and this is now, part of what we've always tried to do is to learn from our mistakes. I'm all for industry as long as it is safe, that the proper equipment is there, protective equipment and that it also holds a good ventilation. You know, those all need to be. And any new chemicals coming in are thoroughly looked at and people, workers are advised. So like I said, I'm not against industry, but it needs to be safe and it needs to, we need to understand that we have a, a history and we don't want it to be repeated in future generations. But it's not that I don't like industry. I think it was the economic building block for this city. And I'd like to see it come back, but it, it has to come back in a, in a more prominent form of modifications and modernism, I guess you might call it.
Any further questions for Sue? Counselor Crowley, please.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Chair. Hello, Susan, thank you for coming tonight and telling your story. I, I'm just wondering, just to add to what everyone else has mentioned, have you reached out to Minister McCarthy, who's the Minister of the Environment? And maybe tell him your story as well? And I know that we've had a few emails that I've been copied on this week where people have reached out to the Environment Minister. And I think that's a really important thing, especially in light of the lack of power that we have to compel somebody to demolish a site. I'm just wondering if we could get some sort of, or maybe you could get some sort of letter-writing campaign together, because I think that would have a really great impact.
Sue, please.
Yeah, yeah, no, I absolutely agree. I mean, our, our lobbying has been mainly with the Minister of Labor, who at some points were very helpful. And so I, I understand that the impact of writing letters, making an appeal to the Ministry of the Environment, which I think should be heavily involved.
Well, thank you again for coming. I appreciate that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Thanks so much, Sue, for being with us this evening. Appreciate it. The next presenter is Deirdre McGannherne. Deirdre, please. Welcome. If you could provide your name and address for the public record. You have five minutes to make a presentation. At the end of four, we'll let you know you have a minute left to, to sum up. Welcome and again, your name and address for the public record.
Sure, my name is Deirdre McGarren. I live at 500 Patterson Street, Peterborough, Ontario. Thank you, everybody. It's nice to be. Okay, on September 12th, I received a letter from GE Verona stating that the company has submitted a notice of intent to demolish buildings at 107 Park Street. As a resident of Patterson Street, just 500 feet away, I'm alarmed. I live in a super insulated, non-toxic home that I renovated with great care for health and the environment. Given the site's toxic industrial legacy, the proposed demolition raises serious concerns about the release of airborne contaminants, including asbestos fibers, chemical dust, PCBs, trichloroethylene into the neighborhood and the wider Peterborough community. I wrote to my counselors on September 28th and I attended last Monday's council meeting and I've been following this story in the news. I've been paying attention and what I'm witnessing is a profound failure of the regulatory system to protect public health from historical industrial contamination. Contamination that threatens residents like myself if this demolition is, is approved. At council last week, I learned that no provincial, municipal or federal laws under the Building Code Act provide mechanisms to protect public health or prevent environmental exposure during the demolition of contaminated industrial buildings. This is shocking. Under Ontario law, a demolition, even of a highly toxic site, does not trigger an environmental assessment unless there is also a change in land use. Furthermore, my understanding, according, according to Mr. Nelson, the explanation to Mayor Lille at council last week is that if approved, the demolition would follow provincial guidelines and regulations and the required designated substance survey would protect demolition workers, but not the residents of the surrounding area. GE is proposing to demolish 910,000 square feet. Please correct me if I'm wrong, like this is shocking. That's almost, that, that if you round up, the nearest rounding up number is a million. 910,000 square feet of historically toxic buildings on a contaminated site in the middle of a residential area. And yet no regulatory body has required proof that this can be done safely without releasing, releasing hazardous material into the community. If not taken seriously, this demolition risks becoming yet another chapter in Peterborough's long and painful history of toxic exposure that Sue James just spoke so well to. In closing, I want to be absolutely clear. Given the known presence of carcinogenic and toxic substances at the GE site, including asbestos, PCBs, TCEs, this demolition, demolition poses an unacceptable and unmitigated health risk to the people of Peterborough, not just those on the fence line. All counselors who spoke last week expressed concern for, for local residents on this issue. Mayor Lille said, I'm concerned as anybody about this site. Counselor Parnell said, contamination is a major concern. La Chica said, among other things, we need to be the counselors that use our due diligence to protect our public. I call on the city of Peterborough to pause on the decision to demolish 80% of 107 Park Street until a transparent, independent and comprehensive environmental and public health review of the proposed demolition has been completed. If this demolition cannot be done safely and no one has demonstrated that it can be, then it shouldn't be done at all. Thank you.
Deidre, thank you very much for your presentation. There's questions. Counselor La Chica, please. Counselor La Chica.
Thank you very much, your worship, through you. To Ms. McGarren, thank you so much for sharing this information with us. And as a builder, you said you're a builder, you, you regularly deal with planning departments, CBOs, all of that sort of thing and are aware of, of some of the regulations. So appreciating that you have that background. Do you know of any other municipalities that have attached provisions in their building code that are requiring any things like environmental assessments, air quality monitoring, dust and debris containment, advance notice for, say, schools or other, you know, organizations or businesses that may be nearby? Do you know of any other municipalities that have attached that to their building codes?
Mr. Governor, please.
Well, the building, the building code is a provincial act that is ultimately falls under the, the national building, I'm being trusted here right now, falls under the National Building Code. Perhaps if it hadn't been Thanksgiving weekend, this past weekend, I would have had a little bit more time to dig into the act. Bottom line, the Building Code Act is, is all based on safety. That's, that's why we have building code, right? It's, it's to protect us from fire, it's, it's to protect the people in the buildings. So I, that's an excellent question. I, I want to know the answer to that too. And I'm very happy to see some experts in the room that hopefully they can speak to that. But bottom line, it doesn't make sense to me that the building code wouldn't trigger some sort of review because the fundamentals of the building code, the objectives of the building code are safety. That's what it all comes back to.
Thank you. And supplemental.
Thank you. And supplemental, I, I think that with your curiosity about this, would you be willing to investigate that in the coming days since it's no longer a long weekend? Because I have heard that indeed there are municipalities that have attached that to their building code.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Great. You're welcome.
Any further questions? Counselor Baldwin, please. Thanks very much, Your Worship. Deirdre, how long have you lived at Patterson Street?
Uh, 2011.
2011?
Yes.
So, Sue, the mayor, were you living on Patterson Street when the other buildings from General Electric were demolished?
Mr. McGarren?
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Yes.
Sorry, Worship.
One of them.
I'm just wondering, during that process, are you aware of any precautions that were taken during the demolition, either by General Electric or Province of Ontario or locally?
No, I don't recall receiving a letter at that time. Not to say I didn't, I don't recall. All of a sudden, it was just coming down. If I could expand on that, I believe at council last week, you asked the question, was there any fallout resulting from that demolition? And my first thought was, well, it's too soon to say. I mean, something like asbestos has a latency period of four years in the body, right? So, so say if the, I know that there was asbestos in those buildings that were demolished at one time. I don't know if they were cleaned up or how well it was cleaned up. It's kind of hard to believe that they got every last little bit of it. We're talking about old brick buildings with lots of crevices. All it takes is one little fiber getting out into the community to cause lung cancer potentially, but it could be four years from now. So, this whole notion of, was there any, you know, cause and effect from this? Well, it's too soon to say.
I respect that, Your Worship. The reason I ask that is because, you know, previously being in the school, school business, we quite often did abatements for renovations to schools where asbestos was in the older schools.
Yeah.
I know there was quite an abatement that went on during that time where people who were specialized in that looked after that particular issue. And of course, they did it when staff and students weren't in the buildings. So that was why I asked the question, Your Worship, to Commissioner Nelson last week, if he was aware of any, anything of a negative nature that occurred or has heard about since those buildings were demolished. That was why I asked the question. So you're not aware of anything either, but I get the four-year picture. All right. Thank you very much, Your Worship.
Any further questions? Ms. McGarren, I have a question for you. Since GE never, and I repeat, never, shared the contents of the letter that they sent to the neighbourhood, 4,500, from the best of your recollection, could you tell me what they put in the letter?
Yes, I, I could have brought it with me, but it was.
I wish you had have.
It was very vague. It, it said, "Dear neighbour, in late 2024, we hired an engineering firm to assess the conditions of our buildings, and they determined that they are in poor condition. And with the health and safety in mind, we have applied to the City of Peterborough to demolish certain buildings at 107 Park Street." They framed it in a health and safety point of view, even though there's nobody working in those buildings. And then from there, they talked about the beautification that would happen, that they had retained an architectural firm to, you know, design like a beautification along the fence line. And they said, "For further information, go to the website." And first of all, there's no return address on this letter. It is an envelope with no return address, no return address, no contact information on the letter. Go to the website, no more information. No information about when the demolition is occurring, when, very vague, and then just sort of nice stories about share your stories of working at GE. GE is a nameless, faceless corporation to me. I have no, no connection to them whatsoever.
Do you still have the letter?
Yes.
I wonder if you'd be so kind, because I'd like my office to have a copy of it since I never saw the contents of the letter. And we'll make sure it gets returned to you. And Counselor Riel, you have a question, sir?
It was Worship to Ms. McGarren. Did you receive a letter? This would be, you've been there since 2011. I, I wish when I was President of the Union, I kept this letter, but a letter was given to all of the neighbours, Patterson Street, Wolsey, Albert, Chamberlain, probably Douglas Avenue, not to grow any root vegetables in their garden.
Absolutely not.
And I wish that I would have kept that letter as the President of the Union, because it would, would have been worth as weight and gold. And that letter went out to all of the neighbourhood, just like the letter that you got here a couple of weeks ago, to not to grow any root vegetables in any of their gardens. So, just wondering if, just wondering if you can remember that, but I certainly do, and I wish I had it.
Ms. McGannhorn, do you, you remember that?
No, I absolutely did not receive that letter. I would not forget something like that, and I will be asking my neighbours for that letter.
Counselor Burke, please.
Thank you. Are you all done? Um, thank you, Mayor Lille. Appreciate it. Deirdre, thank you so much for coming and really appreciated and listened to what you had to say. We, we've heard a lot about what we can't do over the last few weeks, and I'm wondering, would it be helpful to the neighbourhood if council and the mayor could write a letter to General Electric to sort of ask them to, to consult in a deeper way with the community that is, is concerned about what's happening there? Because it seems unfair to ask the neighbours to sort of try to get a hold of, of representatives.
I just want to get a copy of it for my records.
I'm not talking about the letter
Oh, sorry.
of the intent to demolish. I'm, I'm speaking to the concerns that are, I'm interpreting the concerns you're having as being, A, they're being unheard, B, it's like, who do you go to? C, you're here at council and we're like, there's not much we can do. So I'm trying to just brainstorm and, and think about something that we could do that could be helpful. Would it be helpful if council drafted a letter to send to the company, to General Electric, to, to ask them to further consult with the neighbourhoods around the site because they have deep concerns about how this demolition is going to happen?
Ms. McGannhorn, please.
I am cautious that that would be a meaningful, you know, conversation, and I, I think I would, I'd prefer to have a third-party oversight on that or, or at that meeting. I, I, there's nothing in my experience of, of this company so far that leads me to believe that they actually care about the people in this city, and they haven't, they haven't stepped up and said that they're going to clean up the site. That's really what they need to do. So, I, short of that, I don't really know what, what they would say to, you know, make me feel differently.
Yeah, and through the chair, are you in, are you in favour and supportive of us at council following the staff recommendations, the two recommendations that got voted down and sort of changed? The one recommendation is that the entire parcel of, of buildings go to PAC Act for review and to have them come back to us. And the second one, that staff hire a third party to peer review in an unbiased way, the ERA report. Are you in favour of that?
Yes.
You're in favour of those? Thank you very much.
Yes, both of those. Yeah.
I'm fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And the next presenter, two gentlemen I haven't seen in a while, is Robert and Dale Dometo. Welcome, gentlemen.
Hi, Jeff.
Welcome, Bob. Good to see you. If we could just have your, your name and address for the public record. Five minutes to make your presentation, sir.
Okay, Robert Dometio. Right, and I live at 8158 Gilmore Road in Campbellboro. And my wife, Dale.
Welcome.
I live at the same address and also in Campbellboro.
Please proceed, and a very warm welcome, glad to have you here.
Thank you very much. I, I just wanted to say with that, I decided not to read because I have so, so signs of problems right now, so Dale's.
Dale's going to handle it. Okay, go ahead, Dale.
First of all, good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing us to come and present before you. We are here to warn council of the extremely hazardous nature of the plan to demolish multiple buildings within the GE complex. In the 2017 retrospective study of the plant, we documented industrial processes in over 30 departments, identifying thousands of toxic chemicals and physical agents. Based on this work, we state without reservation that demolishing these buildings will put the community at great risk of exposure to highly toxic residues in the form of dust, particulate, mists, gases, liquids, and vapors. Post-9/11 health studies document residents living near the World Trade Centre as developing serious respiratory and digestive system illnesses associated with exposure to asbestos and other toxic chemicals. We provide the following highlights from the GE report to support our contention that the company's request for demolition requires serious discussion and review. Production at GE was massive and complex. Over 3,000 hazardous chemicals were used daily and in large quantities, including 25 classified as IARC cancer-causing. Production was diverse. In addition to manufacturing large diesel engines and electric motors, GE produced its own rubber, plastic, and wiring from scratch. Forty thousand pounds of lead was used weekly between 1945 and 2000. Researchers from the Canada Blood Service contacted us, seeking information to help interpret the results of a recent survey identifying the Peterborough region as having the highest level of lead in donated blood in Canada. Over 500 pounds of asbestos was used daily, which is associated with high rates of lung cancer, upper airway diseases, and mesothelioma among GE workers. With the introduction of a nuclear department, radiation was added to the GE burden of toxic exposures. In the assembly of nuclear fuel bundles, uranium-filled tubes are welded using highly carcinogenic beryllium powder. A 1991 OCAU report identified that GE nuclear workers had monocyte counts 15 to 20 times lower than expected in a population of normally healthy workers. With respect to public exposure, beryllium was detected in the playground of Prince of Wales Elementary School, located directly across the street from the nuclear department. Timeline exposures indicate the level of beryllium in the playground continues to increase. Given the massive scale of toxic contamination in the plant, and the fact that the demolition is requested primarily to decrease GE's municipal tax burden, it is our view that GE is not positioned to safely and ethically handle a demolition of this scale and complexity. Prior to council making any decision, what is first required is extensive community discussion as to, one, who is responsible for the contaminated property and the costs associated with required remediation? Two, who is determined to, to, who is to determine the level of remediation required? Three, what is the feasibility and advisability of demolishing these buildings? They're two different things, feasibility and advisability. Four, the risks of leaving the land as it is versus risks associated with building removal? And the ongoing cost to the community with the land left as it is? It is our view that GE has responsibility to clean up the contaminated aftermath of a very prosperous 100-year enterprise. In stating upfront that their demolition request is to reduce GE's tax burden, the company in effect will shift long-term responsibility for the proposed cleanup to local taxpayers. GE's financial and moral obligations to the municipality of Peterborough should be established prior to making any decision on the fate of these buildings. Thank you.
Through the chair to Bob and Dale. Thank you very much for being here tonight, and certainly it's great to see you. And certainly, your work is appreciated by the workers and their families, and certainly the ones that have been left behind, but also the widows and the widowers.
Thank you.
About, my question is, and certainly in your report, and I, trying to emphasize this here, you made a comment of over 3,000 chemicals used in the GE site. Not three, not 30, not 300, 3,000 chemicals. And when we had the intake clinic, OCAU said, "We've never seen this many chemicals used in one place anywhere in the world." Can you verify that? And certainly the reports that you made, certainly Bob and, or Dale?
Bob or Dale, please, to respond.
Absolutely. I mean, my experience as an occupational health educator and, and researcher, I've never seen a workplace with such a large saturation of chemicals, and particularly ones that have also been given toxicity rate. And, you know, particularly, you know, when you look at the 25 of those chemicals, it's 25 that have been, and doesn't mean it's the end of the road. There's a lot more assessments that have to be launched. But to see that 25 of those are judged by IARC, the International Agency on the Research of Cancer. These are, that these are cancer-causing, you know, to humans. Surprised, I mean, that agency is a very conservative agency to begin with. So to get through that, it means it's pretty bad. But, I mean, we live in a chemical world, you know, and there's no escaping that. But you've got to look at, just learning that, that's typical of the ice. I mean, radiation, you know, for example, you know, you know, when you're talking about uranium. Well, the thing is, everybody's, you know, frightened about, you know, that aspect of it, you know, in terms of radiation, cancer. And nobody looks at it as having another kind of effect on the hormonal system. You know, in other words, it actually can interfere with the endocrine system of, of, of humans and animals, you know. So that has a bigger problem because that can lead into the effects on your children or your project. So anyway, yeah, you know, it is a big, and this has been, we have really quite an experience, one that I really didn't want to do, you know, because I had just been in retirement for, you know, just five years, you know, and just not enjoying it. Anyway, Jim Gill, who you know, got in touch with me, and, and we were off to the races again.
Bob, can you kind of give council your thoughts about the corporation we're dealing with? I've, I've known you since CEW and then Unifor, and before that, we've known each other. But I don't think people understand the corporation you're dealing with. And you've been, worked all over Ontario for CEW and Unifor and all this stuff. And you've helped the widows and the widowers and the workers of General Electric. I don't think this council understands the corporation they're dealing with. Can you give us a brief?
Bob, can you give us a brief overview on that question?
It's a very powerful organisation. You know, it's, 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 it's been a factor, you know, it was the US and allied military, you know. So, first of all, these people, you know, that, that corporation in particular is coming from a very strong, you know, position, particularly where the issue becomes regulating what they do, you know, particularly for human health. And that is very difficult. There's a great history by Barry Castleby, you know, who studied GE's practices in, in terms of informing the public. You know, um, who studied GE's practices in in terms of informing the public about the lethality of many of their chemicals, you know, as as well as as well as some of the drugs they're in, they are part of the manufacturing of pharmaceuticals too. You know, and, uh, uh, it it's quite interesting, uh, a very interesting book I I picked up during this research, and it's a very old book. It's kind of falling apart, and Dale found it on Amazon. And and it was the autobiography of Alice Hamilton. Alice Hamilton was really kind of the mother of occupational and industrial health.
Bob, we got several more questions for you. Uh, next I have Counselor Burke and Counselor Lachica. Counselor Burke, please.
Thank you, Marylile. Um, through you to Mr. or to Robert and Dale. Nice to see you. Thank you so much. Um, I've been aware of so much um, of these stories on the site, but I I'm hearing for the first time now about the lead, and and that's a powerful thing that you just said. Um, and I'm glad you talked about GE's history of notifying the public of the harms of the chemicals that they're using. And my question to you is about because we're being asked in this demolition to trust that the regulating bodies, the the Ministry of the Environment is going to is going to be the thing that's going to safeguard this demolition. Um, is there anything in place with the Ministry of Environment or other where if I have a young family and I'm moving to Peterborough and I want to move to Albert Street or to Monaghan, um, is there anything that is done through the ministry to notify me that I'm moving in along the fence line of a of a factory that has, um, that holds this contamination? Is that happening?
Dale, please, if you can answer.
Yeah.
So we started looking at some of the information that was coming out of the States in terms of their public health policy. We were looking basically to find out, is there any distance that you have to have between a school or even a clinic or a park or anything like that in in Canada or Ontario? And it's not, we have no, we have no regulations. Whereas in the States, about fifteen years ago, they said, they they sat down to do a real analysis in terms of protecting the health of children to determine those kinds of answers, you know, where how far should a should a family live away from a, uh, uh, well, kind of any factory or or different kinds of official, you know, workplaces. Uh, and they and they did a really good job of looking at all kinds of issues around children's health. And I I couldn't find anything about children's health in our public health system. They've gone into all kinds of other areas, but they've not taken the very basic one. Just saying, you know, how do you protect children and families? And you do that by having policies, you know, and and principled um, statements about what we need to do and not do, you know. So I would say that we should start by starting to shake the the trees of our health system and say, start looking at what we do for our children. And let's start having the kind of policies that the US did manage to do, and they did it in concert with families, neighborhoods, communities, and interested groups and everything. And I would say that's probably one of the number one things that is missing in this country to protect families and particularly children and children in schools and children playing fields, children doing all the things that they like to do in a safe way. Not being protected from this kind of invisible, you know, chemicals that surround us.
And the hiding of information, you know. You know, when we were doing our research on this tragedy, and this something is not just readily available, it doesn't come off the bookshelf. You know, you really have to dig into the articles and dive, you know, into the into the research. And, uh, it was interesting because the minister at the time, uh, the minister, the prime, uh, uh, premier at the time, you know, came out and said, well, you know, these companies just didn't know about the hazards, you know, of these things, you know. Well, the thing is, is that Dr. Alice Hamilton, in her autobiography, she was really the personal physician for Gerard Swoop, who was the president of GE in the US. And in that, she basically says that I had to advise Mr. Swoop that conditions, you know, of exposure to asbestos are lethal. Right? And she was also told by one of the GE, uh, uh, GE representative. Yeah, yeah, well, well, yeah, I mean, well, let me back up a minute. The, uh, I mean, what what happened was that the the, uh, you know, once she, you know, indicated that this was not the case, it was, you know, it, you know, it was, you know, serious hazards here. But that was in nineteen twenty nine when she was advising Swoop. And this is now the two thousands. And the company's still maintaining that these things don't cause cancer or.
Bob, we have a couple of more questions.
Yeah, sorry.
We want to.
Sorry.
I'll wrap it up.
Get everybody in here. So Counselor Burke.
Yeah, thanks. I'll wrap it up. I think, um, I'm one of eight siblings who lost our parents young and suddenly to cancer from external things. And I think that um, it's deeply important to me to 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 look at the things you're talking about in terms of safeguarding um, families and people from those things. Um, you're asking us in terms of what is in front of council tonight. Uh, what I heard you say is that you're in favor of us deferring this decision to allow the demolition, um, whether it's by us or the community. Um, because what because whether it's by us or the community will allow for us to further um, have time to ask questions and investigate, um, everything you're bringing to us, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Counselor Lachica, please.
Thank you very much through your worship. Uh, to both of you, thank you so much. Um, Counsel Counselor Burke last week held up the map that I believe that you were responsible uh, for creating to identify the various chemicals. So so that came from your report as well as a quite a lengthy report that we were able to access at the Trent Valley Archives that Elwood Jones shared with us that exists on on the website for Unifor. Thank you for your commitment to to workers and occupational health and safety, industrial health and safety, and for your expertise because that that analysis is indispensable for something like a demolition. My question is, sure, by workers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
John Ball was involved.
John, no, John wasn't. Well, Gary Lane.
Oh, Gary Lane, right? Yes, Gary.
You know, spent many, many hours.
They are all gone now, by the way. Yeah, he's very.
Thank you for sharing that. And and if I may, through you, your worship, um, you know, I I just happened to watch, um, a series about a landmark case in in, um, in Corby, England, um, that that is, it's called Toxic Town, and it actually is, it's a true story about, um, about remediation, quote unquote, for redevelopment on on a site very similar to GE. And the comparisons are uncanny. It's just out. And, um, something that came up there was the impact of rain. And especially if there is dust or chemicals and it's a demolition site, um, the impacts of extreme weather and rain can flush those chemicals quite widely beyond the neighborhood and through into the watershed. And that was part of what was the breaking point in this case was was the fact that they discovered that through their investigation. Would you be worried about that based on your knowledge of chemicals at the GE site that 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 could be a hazard that would be created through demolition if it were not supervised or monitored?
Bob or Dale or both?
Yeah, well, absolutely. Uh, and I'm I'm familiar with that film, you know, and the thing is, is that it brings to mind what I see happening in in our little community called Bullard Hope. You know, with respect to the remediation process going on there, which is an abomination, frankly, you know. Uh, and, you know, in terms of the lack of precautions, you know, and how they're treating the residents there. I mean, can you, I can't imagine, and maybe you would, you know, if it happened to you. You know, they said, okay, we're going to remediate your stuff and get all that harmful radiation out of your hair. You know, uh, but, uh, no, we're not getting you a place to live. And in the meantime, you're going to stay there. New people have been stayed in, you know, and and the work goes on. Uh, you know, for ten years, nothing's been really achieved, right? And they're living in that, you know, and their elders are getting very sick, you know, from what's going on, as well as the stress that this imposed on them too.
Thank you.
Yeah. About and about the experts, you know.
Thank you. And if I I know one final question through you, uh, your worship. Um, you did your research. I just wanted to make sure I understood this. You did your research since those central buildings were vacated, correct? Or or at the same time? Just curious.
Yeah, yeah. Sue, by the way, was our chair of the advisory committee, you know, she knows all.
Thank you. That's helpful. So it's fairly current information.
Counselor Crowley, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, through you, um, thank you both so much for being here. Well, I think you you can stay if you like, if you want.
Dale, come back.
You don't, I know I'm the invisible counselor, but really, like, come on.
Go ahead, Counselor Crowley.
Through you, your worship, in your research, did you ever come across uh, any sort of complaints made by workers or residents in the area to any provincial agency? Bob or Dale? Was there any repercussion from that?
I mean, what our experience, you know, with the people that we've been working with, you know, and trying to deal with agencies that are there supposedly there to protect me.
Yeah.
Is that they get very little support. And there really is something that I think is important, you know, and it's a it's a term that's developed over the drug disputes, uh, you know, with, you know, the pharmaceutical industry. And that's called, and it's particularly apparent in the United States. You know, it's called regulatory capture. You know, that the people that you've installed, you know, to look after the health of your citizens, you know, is captive to industry, particularly the big multinational corporations.
No, that's great. That's all I wanted to know. But thank you both for coming. So.
Any further questions? Thanks so much, Bob and Dale. And Bob, just let me say it was a pleasure to work with you in my previous political career.
Yes, yes, I have good memories.
Thanks, Bob. And I'll talk about that later.
The of the Labor Minister at the time, too.
Kevin Flynn, and I'll.
Yes.
I'll talk about that during the public discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Um, next we have, um, Stuart Hamilton of PACAC. Mr. Hamilton, please. Welcome, Stuart. If we could have your name and address for the public record, and you've been here many times, so you know the the routine.
All right. Thank you very much. So good evening, your worship, members of council. I'm Stuart Hamilton, the Chair of PACAC. Twenty twenty five represents my fifteenth year as a member of PACAC, fourteen years as Chair. The address is six sixty one Park Street North, and of course, the address of record for the committee is here. Um, five hundred George Street North. So last week, I sent a letter to the Clerk's Office to distribute to members of council outlining PACAC's understanding of the Ontario Heritage Act and PACAC's position regarding the applicable law in this matter. This evening, I will not be presenting on any occupational health and safety concerns regarding the site. My comments will be limited to the staff report on the matter from last week. PACAC is requesting that council support the city staff request that a consultant be retained to peer review the heritage impact assessment prepared for one oh seven Park Street North. PACAC believes that an independent review will best serve the city and its residents. As well, PACAC is requesting the entire matter regarding one oh seven Park Street North be sent to PACAC for a review. This would include the submitted HIA by the property owner and if so approved, the peer reviewed report. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hamilton. Counselor Lachica, please.
Thank you very much, your worship. Um, through through you, your worship, um, to Stuart Hamilton. Thank you for coming tonight. Um, can you explain why you feel that a peer review is important in this situation? Because the argument is that ERA has presented uh, a report that's quite thorough and and respectful of the 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 history and legacy of GE. Thank you.
Uh, through you, your worship, through your worship to Counselor Chica. This is something we've done before. This isn't new. Um, it's important, I think, that we as a municipality rely upon our own experts and that we take this information knowing that it was prepared for the property owner and their use. It wasn't prepared for our use. I think it's important that we rely upon our own experts and we do our due diligence to make sure the information represents our interests.
Um, thank you. Um, and and if I may, just one further question. If a property is listed um, under municipalities' heritage listings for potential designation, um, is that listing, um, the whole property? Does it include the whole property? Thank you.
Yes, it is. In this case, it's the entire property, every building on the site. And that's that's normal. That's how it works.
So so to to, um, to attempt to change that on the part of council would be essentially an an attempt to delist the property. Would you not agree?
Stuart, please.
Yes, um, to delist a property or to list a property. I think the Heritage Act is clear under section twenty seven, item four. The council has to come back to a heritage committee if one so exists.
In order to delist a property.
In order to delist a property. That's correct, counselor.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Counselor Real, please.
Through the chair, Mr. Hamilton, you know, I find it funny of what General Electric has done on the heritage thing. They have listed the buildings they want heritage on. And that's the buildings along one oh seven Park Street and certainly the buildings that are now occupied by B W T X. The rest of them, they said, we want to tear down. So I find it very strange. Do you not find it strange that they have told you this is the heritage buildings, but the rest we're going to tear down? Do you not find us smoke and mirrors?
Uh, through you, your worship, yes, Counselor Real, I do. And this really speaks volumes to why we need to have this thing peer reviewed. Because, again, it's, uh, the person who wrote the HIA is representing their client. And that's exactly what they're doing. They're telling us what their client wants us to hear.
Um, through the chair, Mr. Hamilton, you not you not find it strange, like, and you just alluded to the fact that General Electric has hired their own? But really, we have our own, which is PACAC. You people are chosen by us to sit on a committee for our heritage of the city. Do you not find it strange why we wouldn't want you to do the peer review on this site?
Mr. Hamilton, please.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Actually, not just myself, all members of the committee. When we met last week on Tuesday, we found it very concerning, and we spoke with staff at length at during the meeting regarding just that. It's it's very unusual in this. Again, like I said earlier, this really should come back to the committee with a peer review would be ideal. Thank you.
Thanks for having me. Counselor Lachica, for a second, talk. Counselor Lachica, please.
Thank you very much. Through you, your worship, to, um, to Stuart. Um, just just a question. Um, in doing a little bit of cursory research on ERA, the architectural firm, um, I read something about their work for Glen Abbey Golf Course. Is there, can you enlighten us just in terms of any of the information that has been made public about that? Thank you.
Stuart, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, I don't have a full background on what they did regarding that. I know there was, um, something between the town of Oakville and a developer who was looking at doing some work and maybe demolishing the Glen Abbey Golf Course, and they were representing the developer. Um, I know they didn't win, um, but I don't know any specifics regarding how they presented their case.
Thank you. And and did that to impact, um, the perception within the industry perhaps that, you know, was that a fair and representative, um, analysis of the heritage value of Glen Abbey? Thank you.
Uh, and through you, your worship, in my opinion, it wasn't. But I think that's a good question for staff, to be honest, to see if there's more. They've been able to glean uh, through HIAs and in particular. uh, through HIAs and in particular ERA's work.
Thank you very much, your worship.
Counselor Baldwin, please.
Through you, your worship, um, Stuart, it's good to see you. Two questions, uh, similar. In your experience, which is fifteen years in art community doing the work that you do, um, are you aware of any other property that has multiple buildings on it? Or council has said, let's just look at part of the parcel rather than all of the parcel? And are you aware of any other community that's done something like that?
Counselor Hamilton, please.
Uh, through you, your worship, no to both. I'm not aware of any, in, in, no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, any further questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'll call up, uh, a very famous person on TV, Daniel Miskin. Great commercials, by the way. If you could have your name and address for the public record, and, uh, and we, you'll have five minutes, sir.
Daniel Miskin, three five one Charlotte Street. So I'm a lawyer at Miskin Law, and my legal practice focuses on people diagnosed with cancer caused by uh, exposure to dangerous chemicals and materials. Just this week, I spoke to two young women in their thirties who are now I represent, and both are diagnosed with terminal asbestos cancer, thirty years old. This isn't history, this is the present. For over a century, GE operated in this city, it provided jobs and supported families, but it also left behind contamination that still endangers them. If demolition moves ahead without strong environmental controls, what liars buried will rise again. And Peterborough will pay the price once more. The Ontario Building Code requires a demolition permit and some safety measures, but it was never designed to deal with chemical contamination. It says nothing about solvents, PCBs, or heavy metals. Asbestos is covered in a separate rule, but only when someone reports it honestly. The point is simple, following the building code doesn't make this demolition safe without proper environmental testing. Those same toxins can spread through the air, the water, and our neighborhood. When these buildings come down, asbestos will not stay contained, it will travel. There's no safe level of exposure, even a single fiber can cause cancer. Materials like plaster, drywall, pipe insulation, and even the mortar in the bricks of the building can contain asbestos. When they're torn apart, that dust drifts through the air onto nearby homes and towards the school across the street. Even brief exposure increases lifetime cancer risks for every hundred people breathing the dust. Several could develop an asbestos-related disease decades from now. That's not acceptable when it's preventable. For decades, government policy on asbestos was to leave it in place and paint over it, and we've seen that policy has failed. We still see new mesothelioma cases every year from buildings that were left alone. Doing nothing is not safety. In March twenty twenty four, the Ministry of the Environment issued a director's order confirming contamination of the soil and the groundwater with PCBs, TCE, vinyl chloride, and other carcinogens. PCBs have already reached Little Lake contaminating sediments, and solvent vapors continue to rise through the soil. The order requires GE to contain and treat these toxins, and demolition risks breaking those systems and releasing what they were meant to hold. The ministry's oversight is limited to containment, not cleanup. The order does not address demolition or full remediation. As long as the caps remain, the ministry considers its duty done. And that's not protection, that's postponement. This council has both the authority and obligation to act. With the municipal act, you have the power to protect health, safety, and the well-being of residents. Section ninety seven point one allows you to regulate site alteration, including demolition and soil disturbance. The Supreme Court of Canada confirmed that municipalities can impose stricter environmental protections than the province when residents are at risk. You can call on the ministry to expand the director's order to include demolition oversight and full remediation. You can delay or deny any demolition permits until the ministry confirms that no breach will occur. You can require GE to post an environmental bond to cover up cleanup costs if contamination spreads. The authority exists, it's written into law, the question is whether you will use it. Peterborough is already a cancer hotspot. Vinyl chloride is linked to brain cancer, benzene and PCBs to leukemia and multiple myeloma, asbestos to lung cancer, and many other cancers. These chemicals are used right here. Solvents like TCE travel through the soil and into groundwater where they persist for decades. Many of you know someone with brain cancer, leukemia, or multiple myeloma? Some of those cases trace back to the same chemicals found under the GE site. When we ignore contamination, we're not protecting anyone, we're only waiting for the next diagnosis. Listen, I want this site demolished, but I want it done properly. I want GE to pay for the cleanup so the land can be restored, not buried under a new problem. This should be a place where families can walk with it worrying about what's in the air or under our feet. If you sit on this council and you cannot take the time to understand the legal tools available to you, then you should not be making decisions that affect public health. Ignorance and inaction here are not harmless, they will cost lives. I believe most of you ran for council because you wanted to help this city, and this is your chance to prove it. You cannot undo the last hundred years, but you can prevent the next disaster. The laws exist, the evidence exists, what's missing is the will to use them. General Electric poisoned this community for decades and then walked away. If this council does nothing, you are complicit in the next generation's exposure. History will remember whether this council acted or turned away.
Thanks very much, Mr. Miskin, we have some questions. Counselor Burke, then Counselor Real, Counselor Burke, please.
Thank you, Mary Lee O three to Mr. Miskin, um, thank you so much for coming today. Are you, in your work, representing people that have been affected by this? Are you aware of, um, them, I am, I don't want to say it publicly, but are you aware of demolitions that have happened with sites that contain asbestos that under the oversight should have been done in a proper way, and yet have been done, you know, at midnight or improperly, are you aware of cases like that?
Yes, I have. Yes, I have hundreds of clients with mesothelioma, and many of which were demolition workers, some of them were abatement workers who had the proper masks and materials. This happens all the time.
Through, through the, through the Chair, I'm interested in the thought that you gave, and I'd, I'd like to ask you to please expand upon it. Um, you gave us, because the frustrating thing about the meeting last week is we were left with, you know, we can't do anything, essentially is what we were told from our staff and from, from others, and, um, you gave some suggestions about some certain conditions we could attach to the demolition permit, can you talk a bit about that?
Mr. Miskin, please.
How would you like it if I wrote a memo and sent it to you later in the week with all my suggestions?
Be great, thank you so much.
Counselor Real, please.
Here to Mr. Miskin, and thank you very much for being here, and I think that, uh, meet a lot of points, um, I have lived through this for thirty eight and a half years, and was the full-time president at General Electric, and have been fighting this for the workers. My question is, and I don't know if you have some of your clients are GE, or GE former workers, and you're probably dealing with WSIB. And the Vice President of the Health and Safety for General Electric, who was an hemidipliologist, when we had a mortality study, when I was the President of the Union, one of the studies we had was leaking information to WSIB, so then we brought cases forward. At that time, we only had one case ever, and that was nineteen fifty four by one worker that worked in wire and cable. So I, are you experiencing that, you know, going with a client and facing WSIB?
Mr. Miskin, please.
I don't work with WSIB claims. When an injured worker has an injury, they can file a claim with workers' comp or hire a lawyer directly, they can't do both. So the WSIB basically takes the rights to the claim. So if you do not file a claim with the WSIB, you hire a lawyer, and we file a claim directly to the manufacturers of asbestos or different chemical products, and often get a lot more compensation than the WSIB provides.
Uh, I just want to thank you for being here, and I think you kind of rolled out everything of the options that we have, and certainly if some of my councilmates didn't get the gist of what you were telling them, I think we do have some rights and we have some obligations, thank you very much for being here.
Counselor Lachica, please.
Thank you very much, your worship, through you to Mr. Miskin, thank you so much for being here, for our conversation this week, and for your commitment to public health and safety, and in the work that you do for this community, it's just, um, so appreciated, and, um, I'm, thank you for offering to send us a memo regarding suggestions, uh, about what we can do as a municipality to do our due diligence. Would you be also able to send your presentation, um, along with that? Would that be a possibility?
Mr. Miskin, please.
Do you mean what I said today?
That's correct.
Sure.
That would be great, um, and, and I wanted to ask you as well. We have new hazards because of extreme weather. If, if, if we have a demolition underway and there is weather, is there a possibility of contamination more widely than the site itself?
Mr. Miskin, please.
Yes, definitely, say there's high winds on a day of demolition, you know, the asbestos particles may reach City Hall instead of just the school.
Is there any possibility that it could reach, uh, the, the, the water system?
Oh, it already has.
Is there evidence that it has, uh, reached our, our, uh, our Otanaby River and Little Lake, our source of water?
Yes, and I'm surprised you're not aware of that, about the contamination in Little Lake, they, they tell you not to, um, touch the bottom of the lake to disturb the sediment, you know, with all the floods in Peterborough, all the chemicals washed down. And a lot of the reports I read, they're, they go through the storm sewers and right into the lake.
Thank you, and through you, through you, your worship, um, yes, aware of it, but I'm just saying, if there were a demolition underway, is there a possibility of, of the, the, you know, fallow contaminants that are sitting there could, could penetrate waterways in a new way? Thank you.
Yes, so it's already happened, and it could happen again and be much worse, and a new wave of cancer could be seen throughout the community.
Thank you very much for that.
Mr. Miskin, are you suggesting it's in our drinking water?
I don't know if it's in your drinking water, but I've heard, I've read it's in the lake.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, sir. Jane Scott, please, Ms. Scott. If we could have your name and address for the public record, and five minutes for a presentation.
Okay, my name's Jane Scott, and my address, five eighty Bolivar Street.
Please start.
Okay, um, there are a few things that seem very strange to me at last week's council meeting. First, why are someone counsel in such a rush to sign off on the demolition orders? If there was ever a time to slow down to ensure that the public is protected from contaminated dust and debris and runoff, it is now. This is a highly contaminated site and needs to be handled with care. In the United States, forty two known general electric, electric factory sites are on this US Superfund National Priorities List. These sites are designated as needing a higher, higher priority for cleanup due to their risk to human health and the environment. The US has dealt with highly packed, highly polluted factories like those owned by GE through government regulations, superfund laws, and litigation, which hold polluters legally and financially for cleanup projects. Cleanup involves detailed planning, peer review, and oversight to ensure the cleanup meets environmental, environmental standards. And a lot of these sites are extremely high hazard ratings. And, and they've been, a lot of them have been open less long than the GE in Peterborough. In total, GE has been identified as the responsible party at more than eighty superfund sites. As in Peterborough, the contaminants are not confined to the factory lands, um, but some like the Hudson River and the House Autonic River, just a couple of rivers badly polluted by GE. And according to the US, um, United States Environmental Protection Agency documents, only the United States government, Honeywell, and Chevron are responsible for producing more superfund toxic waste sites. My point in telling you this is that we're not talking about the demolition of an old house at the end of the road here. Careful checks and balances are required. Other levels of government need to be consulted to honor their responsibilities in protecting the public. And the kids at Prince of Wales School need a voice, my kids went to Prince of Wales, and it actually horrifies me about the lead. Um, the playground is twenty five meters from the GE grounds. They weren't even mentioned in last week, the kids weren't even mentioned in last week's city council meeting. It is reasonable, um, to want to see a detailed and independent environmental risk assessment of the demolition before signing any demolition papers. GE should not necessarily be considered a trustworthy partner, given its terrible history of environmental damage. I looked online to see whether Canada has the equivalent of a superfund system, when we don't, but there is a federal contaminated sites inventory, and it lists contaminated sites on federal land. There are various sites on Peterborough shores and waterways listed. One being fifty two hectares of contaminated sediment sludge at the bottom of Little Lake to Rice Lake. Usual contaminants in the lakes show GE's signature blah, 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 it's already been mentioned. My point in that ensuring the safe, is that ensuring the safe demolition of buildings on GE lands is not only a townward problem, it affects the whole city. When I do Googled, you know, it's all rushed because this is a crazy timeline. What are the risks of living near toxic waste sites? Research shows adverse health effects most likely to occur with a, within a one point eight mile boundary of superfund sites. That's from nature, and that's practically all of Peterborough. Um, we also know that there are toxic plumes monitored by the MECP under and around GE, but that's been talked about. Um, the demolition of factories can negatively affect, uh, surrounding lands through air pollution, air pollution from dust and toxins, water contamination from waste and runoff, noise, soil compactions, and disturbance. Proper planning, safety measures, and environmental compliance are crucial to minimize these impacts. You owe due diligence, especially to the children at Prince of Wales and the people living at the fence line of GE complex lands. There needs to be checks and balances because otherwise, public health becomes lost in jurisdictional cracks. For instance, BWXT, which leases land from GE for its nuclear fuel bundling, had an environmental risk assessment done when it applied for permission to make uranium fuel pellets, and it didn't even mention the PCB, TCE, and toxic mental plumes under the factory, but it did mention bobalink and sassafras. Um, legacy pollution was glossed over when BWXT was applying for permission to make uranium fuel pellets. A full environmental assessment would have provided a more thorough review of social and economic health and environmental effects, and it should have been triggered.
Ms. Scott, your time is up, but I'll let you finish your thought.
Okay, um, the CNSC also has, um, to oversight on the GE land as well, and they have to be reminded of their duties to ensure that the public is kept safe from dust and debris of demolitions because of the dangers of internal emissions. Um, too often, public safety precautions have fallen into a sort of jurisdictional black hole in Peterborough, which has suited GE and BWXT very well in the past, a lot of rubber stamping without due diligence. All levels of government have responsibilities here. Remind them, ask questions, and demand answers. City Hall has the opportunity here to break old patterns and not pass the buck. You are holding a good card and have the responsibility to protect public health, protect children's health, and ensure that any demolition plans are well thought out and peer reviewed, and that a public, public safety plan is in place. No decision should be made or voted on until there is a full public information and engagement.
Thanks, thanks so much for your presentation, I did give you some extent of latitude. Questions for Ms. Scott, please? Questions? No questions, thank you very much for your presentation. Mr. Templeman, please, Bill. Bill, if we could have your name and address for the public record, and you've been here before, five minutes for your presentation.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, um, my name is Bill Templeman, I live at three oh one Boswell Avenue in, um, just in this west downtown, uh, interesting, the six hundred meters from BWXT plant and three hundred and sixty five meters from, uh, one oh seven Park. I mention that not to place myself as a Wolf Street resident or, uh, certainly a, uh, Monaghan Street resident or, or Park Street, I'm not that close, but I'm not that far away. Uh, I prepared a document that I sent out to council this afternoon uh, that simply is, uh, the fruit of several hours plowing around the internet, finding all the research I could on contaminants at the GE site and effects on workers. Uh, I sent it to a few members of the press, I'm happy to share it to whomever, uh, it, it's not my research, it's research, it's already online. Uh, simply to help, uh, deal with the people who say, oh, it was long ago, big deal, forget it. Those documents certainly. Those documents certainly, those articles certainly would change that. So what I bring here is really a citizen perspective. I know that tonight's, the motion is about heritage status, status, not the demolition per se. But really, it's a, this whole event is a milestone. As my eye travels around the council chamber, I see quite a few people who have been involved in more, many, many more housing transactions than I have. I've bought and sold one house and bought another one. It's just two. To all of you, all of those people I so identified know a lot more about the buying and selling process in real estate than I do. But all of us know that there's a time to negotiate and there's a time when the negotiations are over. I would suggest that this point with what we're looking at in regard to GE Verona, this is time to negotiate. We're at, we haven't bought the house yet. We can change our offer. We can put on conditions. But once we commit, you know, the bus has left the station. It's over. So I would encourage council to reflect on that. Given all that we've heard, and I should say at the outset, like to give us your thank you to Ms. James, Ms. McGarren, Bob Dale DiMatto, Mr. Hamilton, Jane Scott, of course, Mr. Miskin. The amount of education I've received listening to this is incredible. So thank you for that. Another citizen perspective is costs. Now, my assumption is that GE Verona is going to pay for whatever demolition happens. But as we've heard tonight, demolition is not certainly simply a process of taking apart buildings. There's also soil disruption. Which then begs the question, what about remediation of that entire brownfield? That's a huge block of the city. What is going to happen to that eventually? Maybe not in my lifetime, and maybe not in some of yours. But eventually, that land is going to have to be dealt with. Would now not be a good time to begin to explore that with the current owner? Because if it doesn't happen, processes can devolve and then who's left holding the bag? The last thing I really wanted to, one more point I wanted to focus on is when buildings come down, we've all seen videos on TikTok of what happens in China when they built it. Many skyscrapers, they just dynamite at the bottom and the building collapses, great cloud of dust. Well, we hope that doesn't happen with the buildings on our GE site. But there is going to be demolition, there is going to be dust, and there's going to be rubble. So what is going to happen to the rubble? Where is that going to get stored? Is it going to Fensworth Road, Peterborough's landfill? And what are the cost implications of that? For those of us who live here and will continue living here. So I would certainly place my vote in the camp of those who want a pause, reflection, and a chance to do some detailed study to answer these questions before we roll over and the negotiation is over. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. There may be some questions. Questions for Bill? Thank you very much, sir. Marie Bondgard, please, Marie. Thanks, Roy, for assisting her. She'd be glad it's not me.
Okay, thank you.
Marie, if we could have your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, okay. It's been a while.
Could we just have your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's Marie Bondgard. And I'm at 461 Albert Street. So I live on the street that's in question, I guess. Anyways, thanks very much for allowing me to speak. I'll be very brief because some of the all of the speakers ahead of me gave you a lot of information and things that I was going to speak on. But I will give you a couple of examples of the contaminants. I know that the contaminants will lay dormant, you know, if they're not, unless something happens. We were talking, there's been, there's been a mention of Little Lake. There was a group of environmentalists, and this was around in the beginning of 2000, who were going to clean up Little Lake. And they were down there and they were taking stuff out of the bottom. They were told to quit because if the contaminants were disturbed, it could go into our drinking water. We also know that these contaminants will travel. And an example of that is, and this was, I believe, around 2008, 2009, somewhere in there. There were three properties on Romaine Street between Park and Monigan Road. Actually, they were just west of what is now Crawford Trail. Their backyards had to be dug up. And it was, the lady I knew, it was right up to her, her back door. They were able to take the plumes of the contaminants out. It was quite a procedure. Her, her land was eventually remediated and as far as I know, it's okay now. The lady has passed on, so she's not living there. But before she, before that happened, they had a flag that they removed from the property. So it can be done. My concern too is the drinking water. What happens if the contaminants move and connect with the groundwater? So that was my other concern. But it's interesting too that the property, you kind of wonder why I would say this, but I used to have some site. They've always kept the surface of the ground immaculate. But yet, here they are. They've allowed the buildings to deteriorate to such an extent that they are, will need to be torn down. So my concern is, of course, what will happen if they're torn down? That's about all I can say. I appreciate being able to come and speak. And I know that this is a very difficult situation, a decision to make. But it should be a concern of all the citizens of Peterborough, not just the ones that live in that area, because these contaminants can travel. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Marie. There could be some questions for you. Counselor Burke, question for Ms. Bondgard.
Thanks, Mary Leo, through to Ms. Bondgard. Thank you so much for being here today, tonight. It's interesting you mentioned Little Lake. Are you aware that as part of the plans of the factory, there's a dedicated sewer line directly from the factory that goes to Little Lake?
Um, that's my understanding, yes.
Yeah. And are you aware of what? Are you aware of anything that's been done to limit?
I didn't catch what you said.
Are you aware of anything that's been done by GE to limit the leaching of chemicals and things into that sewer line that goes directly to Little Lake?
Ms. Bondgard?
Just by hearsay. I don't have any definite. But I will say, with the contaminants in Little Lake, the group of divers were quite concerned about the contamin, the amount of of actual stuff. I can't think of any else in the bottom of the lake, and that had to be left there. It had to be left there. And I'm sure that, you know, there's maybe leaching it from that as well. So, but it had to be left there because they didn't want the PCBs and other contaminants being disturbed.
Thank you. You know, I just think while we're talking about drinking water, we have a big report on this agenda about drinking water. And it shows that the intake system for our drinking water comes well upstream of Little Lake, far upstream of Little Lake. But you know, that being said, I think that we all see the young children that swim in the Little Lake in the summertime and use that, and so it is a concern, definitely. So thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any further question for Ms. Bondgard? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Roy. The next presenter is Natasha Lockhart via electronic means. Natalie, if we could get Natasha queued up, please?
Hello? Hello?
Unknown participant is now joining.
Welcome, Natasha. You have five minutes to make a presentation, please.
Oh, hi there. Thank you so much. My name is Natasha Lockard. I live at 11 Beaumont Road in Toronto. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I really appreciate it. I'm the producer and director of Town of Widows, which is a documentary that aired on CBC in 2019 about the legacy of deadly exposures that workers experienced at General Electric in Peterborough and a town of widows left fighting for compensation. You've heard a lot about it today. For three years, I sat in the kitchens and living rooms of countless widows whose husbands had been exposed to a toxic soup of chemicals as well as lethal carcinogens like asbestos. Widows who had never met before were nodding their heads at the others as they shared stories of the taste of chemicals in their husband's coffee or brushing asbestos dust off their sandwich. I also spoke to workers who, so to speak, knew where the bodies were buried. That is, where they said GE would bury the vats of chemicals instead of disposing of them responsibly. He also knew the houses where the asbestos was carted off to despite GE denying that it sold the substance to workers, which he later exposed them on after the film was released. This worker took us on the lake and told us where the chemicals were dumped in some years. And I know there's been a lot of talk about Little Lake. And as we spoke to the First Nation, and they said, you know, there's always someone downstream. And there's been a very high rate of cancer among the Hiwatha Nation. The worker that I'm talking about was Jim DeFrain, who worked and fought hard for this community. Jim fought for workers and widows to be compensated for the illnesses that they unknowingly acquired because of the work that they did every day. But what he also wanted was to protect future generations from harm. For his generation's hardships to be a lesson that would protect others. It was too late for many of his coworkers, but in his mind, it wouldn't be too late for the rest of the community. Fast forward six years later, last week, and I'm hearing that twenty-five of the thirty-three buildings on the GE site are being proposed for demolition without any environmental assessment, without any public consultation. I'm extremely disappointed about those who voted in favor. Jeff Leal, you knew these workers. You knew Roger Fowler. You knew Jim DeFrain. You know Sue James. We filmed you in meetings with those same workers, at tables with them, talking about these contaminants. In our film, Jim detailed how GE tried to donate some of its land for a kid's playground. But that land was so toxic that they had to pave it into a parking lot. Our focus in the film was poisoning, was the poisoning of the people and the workers. But we also heard stories of how teachers in the school that was kitty corner to the plant that's been talked about tonight were experiencing an abnormally high rate of miscarriages. About how one family across from the plant all had cancer, including their child. I think they were twelve years old. And just like Keith Reel said, not to plant root vegetables in the garden. People around the community were warned. I'm not from Peterborough, but I know this community. It's full of kind, honest, and hardworking people who trusted in the company that they kept. And now they're entrusting you all to keep their community safe and healthy from that very same company. They deserve public consultations. They deserve environmental assessments that are independent, like Deargie was saying. Anything less is repeating history and robbing the community of their legal right to know what's buried in their backyard, literal backyard. Thank you for your time and thank you in particular to Joy Lachica and Keith Reel and the other counselors who are voting for what's right. A vote against this demolition is a vote for this community.
Thanks very much, Natasha. There could be some questions. Questions for Natasha. Kelsa Reel, please?
Through the chair to Ms. Lockard. Natasha, great to hear you and certainly thank you for your work on the Town of Widows. You made a couple of points. You talked about the downstream water going to Hiwatha and the adverse effects it's having on that indigenous community. I think that us sitting as council saying, well, our drinking water is upstream on the Otanabee River by Trent University. Well, we have an obligation to the indigenous community and the people that are going downstream from the Otanabee River. And one of them is Hiwatha First Nation. So in your research and your talking with people, what did you find out from the communities that are south of the Otanabee River into Rice Lake?
Ms. Lockard, please?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that question and thank you to Keith Reel. Keith was one, someone who was instrumental. As he's mentioned, the intake clinic where hundreds of workers showed up. It was because of Keith, listening to workers like Aileen Hughes, whose husband had mesothelioma, that a lot of these workers were heard and a lot of these compensation claims were recognized. So thank you, Keith. I actually hadn't planned to talk about that issue at all tonight, but I just thought, you know, there was so much talk about what was downstream and what was in the water and what could be brought up with with these new proposed plans. And I would say it's up to consulting the indigenous communities that would be impacted. At the time, we had talked to the Hiwatha Nation chief and they came out to a lot of actions we organized around the plant. I would say that it's not the same chief anymore. I would say that those indigenous communities need to be consulted. That should always be the case. That is the law. And I would defer to them for that, but I do know that they were it's similar to the miscarriages that I was talking about in in the plant, or in the school that was kitty corner. All this is anecdotal, but when you hear about it over and over and over from community, from workers, there starts to be a pattern and soon anecdotal is actually evident. And that's what people like Bob and Dale DiMatto did. They talked to workers. They mapped out the exposures in the plant. And by talking to workers, they were able to see what kind of carcinogens and what, how much asbestos, five hundred pounds of asbestos per day in the plant. So it's all about talking to the people impacted, the workers, the community members, the indigenous nations that are impacted. That needs to be done.
Through the chair to Natasha. When you were doing your research for the film Town of Widows, and I can tell you when I had a chance to view it, it brought me to tears because a lot of the people I knew. But can you tell, give us a Coles Notes version of when you were doing your research? Exactly the, what the, what the thoughts were of the widows that they were talking to you? And there was widowers too, because there's women that worked in the plant and lost their lives. Can you give us a kind of a Coles Notes version of what your, what your thoughts were while making that film?
Natasha, please?
Yeah, about what the widows were exposed to? Or heard their worker, their partners were exposed to? or heard their worker, their partners were exposed to.
No, when you were talking to the widows or the widowers of people that worked in the GE plant, there must have been a theme that you, you kind of, um, when you were making this film, uh, when they were telling their stories. Can you give us a Coles Notes version of what your thoughts were about that?
Yeah, uh, my thoughts when I first heard about this issue, uh, I heard that workers were dropping like lives from cancer at General Electric in Peterborough. And my first thought, I spoke to someone about this the other day. They didn't know about this. Um, you know, uh, Peterborough is two hours away from Toronto. How did we not hear about this? And it's, as I learned because of, um, a lot of the dynamics of a company town, you know, uh, GE employed all of the city, um, pretty much at one point. Um, I spoke to someone and they worked at GE. Their parents worked at GE. It was, um, they were proud to work at GE. Uh, they're, uh, you know, GE held Christmas parties, and, uh, it was a, a very dear part of the community for a lot of people. And so no one wanted to rock the boat. No one wanted to bite the hand that fed them. Um, so these workers and these widows, um, were speaking up against that. And, and some people were very scared, and some people were very angry, as is often the case. Um, and the exposures is what struck me most, um, hearing, like I said, brushing asbestos off their sandwich, snowstorm of asbestos in the plant, um, the permanent varnish on their skin, um, that would only come off after three weeks on holidays, one widow said. They all talked about this GE smell, um, this very pungent, but also, um, kind of sentimental odor that reminded people that their loved ones were home. Usually it was their father or their husband, because it was a male-dominated workplace. And that's really what struck me, is how so many people, who may or may not have known each other, were telling me the exact same stories over and over, and how a whole community could be impacted. And it just horrifies me, as others have said, that this history could repeat itself if proper diligence isn't done, if there's not a public safety plan. It's very scary.
Very much, Natasha.
Counselor Jacob, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much through your worship. Uh, Natasha, thank you so much for delegating tonight. Um, you know, you shared you're in Toronto, but, uh, your work as Director of Health and Safety at the Ontario Federation of Labor is just a monumental task, and thank you for all you do to protect communities and workers. And your words have resonated. I have a question for you, um, and it's a labor word, and Mr. Templeman mentioned it tonight, negotiation. Um, you know, we're hearing about this informally. Well, GE doesn't have to disclose, is not obliged to discuss any environmental, um, work at this point, because this is the Heritage Report. Do you feel that this is something that is a valid, um, item for a council to do, to negotiate with GE and say, "We make these demands for the public health and safety of our community that we have the following A, B, C, D, um, attached to our building code"? What's your opinion on that, Natasha?
Ms. Lockhart, please.
Yes, uh, through you all, you represent your constituents. You represent your community. Uh, we've seen a history where GE dictates what happens to the workers in Peterborough. As someone else said, GE is a very ominous, uh, who are GE. Um, so, uh, it's really, you have the, you should have the, um, the power to negotiate what happens in your own community. And, uh, as Joyce said, I am the Director of Health, Safety and Environment at the Ontario Federation of Labor. And we've seen, uh, as this provincial government is attacking, uh, the environmental rights. Uh, and, you know, I live in Toronto. As Joyce said, I drive the gravel pit that Ontario Place, I drive past the science center that's being knocked down. Uh, I don't trust in this government, um, to properly look at heritage sites. Um, so it is really up to municipalities to fight back and negotiate. Uh, I don't trust GE, in whatever form it is it's in right now, um, to do what's right for, uh, the community. We've seen how that story plays out, and it's, as I said, history should not repeat itself. We know too much now.
Thank you very much, Natasha.
Any further questions? Further questions? Thank you very much, uh, for your presentation this evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Next, we have Dr. Mickey Redders. Dr. Redders, please, and welcome.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
If we could have your name and address for the public record, and you'll have five minutes for a presentation. Welcome.
Yeah, my name is Vicki Redders. Um, a lot of people know me as retired art teacher. So, I just mentioned I recently completed a PhD in Environmental Studies at Queen's University, where my research examined waste and its social and environmental impacts. So, this is a particularly interesting topic for me, but I can only most, uh, what I've said, I've just done a cursory sort of look at the situation, but...
If we could just have your address for the public...
Sorry, yeah.
Sorry.
My address is 50 McDonald Street, Peterborough, Ontario.
Congratulations on your PhD. Proceed, please.
Okay. So, I'm just speaking as a concerned citizen and resident of Peterborough, and I am finding most of the comments that have been made go into really good depth, and most of them, um, I'm just going to kind of rough over, but perhaps it's a good synopsis of the arguments that have been made regarding the council's decision to proceed with the demolition of 25 of 33 buildings at the former GE site without an independent environmental assessment and without a public safety plan or one that considers future use of the site. Uh, this decision, made despite warnings from residents, experts and advocates many we've heard here, poses unacceptable risks to public health, the environment, and democratic trust. Putting the well-being and history of our community in the hands of a $230 billion corporation in a time where conservative governments are pushing for deregulation, uh, this is about GE externalizing costs for cleanup of the site, and we need to be vigilant, and I'm calling on everyone here to do that. Uh, once demolition begins, the damage cannot be undone. Demolition without independent testing would release asbestos, PCBs, lead, mercury, silica dust, and other toxins. And that's not just one time. Some of these are very permanent, have permanent impacts. Um, all substances have been linked to illness and death, and we've heard more about that. Once demolition, oh, okay, demolition has wider consequences. This is a simple case of environmental classism or environmental injustice. It's a pattern with governments these days and corporations. A contaminated void in the city core drives down nearby property values, undermines community pride, leaving lasting scars that speak of neglect and loss and stigmatization, as we've seen in the case of long-neglected Baskin and Robbins site. I mean, there's just an example of an eyesore that's sitting there in the middle of downtown. Um, and how that, you know, it's not a very attractive... So, uh, and then people have mentioned fewer buildings ultimately reduce tax revenue, and obviously GE is going for that. It's a motivating force. So, demolition dust, uh, as we've heard, is not benign, and it can travel hundreds of meters, hundreds of miles, contaminating homeschool waterways. We've talked about Prince of Wales, a Queen Mary's nearby, the hospital. And, um, just to remind everyone, asbestos causes lung cancer and mezzilli... Oh, no, sorry. Lead unsafe at any level, especially for children. Silica dust causes silicosis and lung cancers. PCBs and mercuries, persistent toxins that bioaccumulate. And then there's synthetic mineral fibers, which are potential carcinogens. Without robust dust suppression and independent monitoring, toxins will travel off-site into the stormwater system, the Otanobe River, Little Lake, and eventually the, uh, the construction demolition will be piled into our landfill. And there it will persist for decades, and that is a serious concern as well. Uh, landfills typically have a 25-year, uh, 25-year, um, life, lifespan, and ours is nearing its end. So, GE's operations, uh, as we've been reminded here, were not harmless. And the uniform, um, report, uniform report documents from 1945 to 2000 how workers were exposed to over 3,000 toxic substances, including more than 40 unknown suspected carcinogens. PCBs, asbestos, vinyl chloride, benzene among them, under unsafe conditions with inadequate ventilation and protection. Okay, well, I just want to highlight that the social costs, which I think, um, maybe haven't been highlighted as much, but, you know, the measurable toxins are one thing, but there's psychological costs and the anxiety of living near contamination, contamination and the loss of social cohesion, uh, stigmatized neighborhoods. This neighborhood seems to be being treated as expendable. Um, and this further erodes trust in public institutions and disenfranchised citizens. And I think there's been some mention, but I'd like to highlight what, um, what, uh, councillor Burke said about including things like mental health and, uh, you know, how people live a life in these areas where they've been kind of stigmatized. So, it's not just an environmental issue. It's about fairness, dignity, and accountability to the people you represent. And, uh, I urge council to suspend demolition immediately. Release all results of a independent, uh, study from experts with no financial ties in clear and accessible language. And then ensure, ensure recommendations are followed for industry best practices and for safe demolition of contaminated sites. Um, please act responsibly.
Thank you very much for your presentation. There could be some questions. Questions for Dr. Redders? No questions? Thank you very much for your presentation. The next, uh, the next item on our agenda is consent items. Does anybody want to speak to 11A? 11A, 11A. No? 11B? 11B? 11C? 11D? 11D? 11E? That's the one you have, the conflict? I'll separate it out. You're welcome. I'll make a little check mark there. Um, 11F? 11F, 11F? 11G? Audit Plan? 11H? University Holdings. Limited. Nope? 11I? Drinking Water Standard of Care. I want to, okay, that's good. 11J? Heathering Park, Heathering Drive Parking Restrictions? 11K? Councillor Crowley wants that separated out. 11L? Municipal Addressing Bylaw Update? Nobody? Okay. 11M? Municipal Ice Storm Assistance Program? No? So, I'll get somebody to move 11A, B, C, D, F, G, H, uh, J, L, and M. Councillor Burke, Councillor Vassiliadis, comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. Another scary, uh, 11D is the one that councillor Hakey declared a conflict. Somebody like to move it? Councillor Beamer, councillor Tugay, comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. Another scary, councillor Reel, the Drinking Water Standard Care? Somebody like to move it, and then we'll have a debate?
I...
You'll move, councillor Baldwin? Councillor Reel, you have the floor.
Um, through the chair to Commissioner Simonowski. First off, I want to thank you for Mr. Danard, um, sending us an email that there's a virtual training, and certainly going to set up something. But my question is, um, I have not received yet the confirmation of our first PUC meeting. This council is the board of water, the city Peterborough. So, I have not received confirmation of when we're going to have a meeting. And they used to be either monthly or quarterly, uh, when I sat on the PUC board.
Mr. Simonowski, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I may defer that question to the CEO.
Mr. Raina, please.
Through you, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we are doing some benchmarking, so we, I will be sending out an email notifying the council whether we want to do monthly or the quarterly. So, you will get a response from me within a week.
And through the chair to, uh, CEO Raina, and when that might be.
Uh, I will send a response within a week, and we will propose a date looking at the clerks, because this is, our council has to be present, so availability of everybody should be there.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Councillor Tugay, please.
Thank you, Mayor Leo. As a follow-up to our general committee meeting, I did have opportunity to reach out to the conservation authority to confirm that if and when we have a training, uh, would they consider a session on source water protection? They would be agreeable with the same. So, I would look forward to that. We're going to work with staff to ensure that they could be part of that training. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tugay. Councillor Burke, please.
Um, thank you, Mayor Leo. Through you to CEO Raina. Um, will we have to decide, will council have to decide upon a structure for the PUC board, like elect chairs and vice chairs and things like that?
Councillor Raina, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wish I'm not a councillor, but, um, uh, through you, uh, again, I'm doing the benchmarking. So, when I write the details back to the council, I will also recommend the model.
Mr. Simonowski, I have a question. It was raised this evening about asbestos, you know, being in Little Lake, potentially being in our drinking water supply. Um, there's testing, a question about Hiawatha. I would just like to get your response about that, because we don't want to alarm, unduly alarm, uh, citizens in Peterborough with regards to the quality of their drinking water.
Certainly through, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council, yes, the Ministry of Environment does require substantial amounts of testing with regards to water quality, both in the system and the raw water. And the testing, um, there's a number of, uh, compounds that are required to be tested, reported on with exceedances. So, both our system, and I know Hiawatha also has a groundwater supply system, do require that testing. These reports are generally available online, if not directly from the water authorities. So, that information is available to the public, and if there's any questions through council, happy to direct, um, anyone interested to those reports and that information.
Thank you, Mr. Simonowski. That's reassuring. Uh, councillor Burke, please.
Um, thank you, Mayor Leo, and through you to Commissioner Simonowski. Can you help, can you help us understand? Because I think in your report, I think it's clear that, uh, our intake comes upstream of Little Lake, which is the sort of place in question here for this. Who is the authority over managing, um, sort of toxic levels in Little Lake? Is that the, um, is that a public health authority? And then follow up, like, who owns, do we own, does the city own Little Lake?
Mr. Simonowski, please.
Certainly through, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm not familiar with specific details of Little Lake. I can tell you with regards to, um, situations where recommendations are not to disturb the bottom of, uh, of water bodies where contaminants have been known to enter, uh, is generally from the Ministry of Environment through the... through the Safe Water and Clean Water Acts. So those documents definitely identify those necessary, I guess, recommendations. And often there's information that may not necessarily be available or directly supported, say to municipalities, but is available if, if organizations seek that through whether it's federal or provincial agencies. So all that to say, there are, there are reports tonight that were mentioned that I'm not aware of. And I'm definitely looking forward to getting a little bit more understanding of what's happening within Little Lake myself.
Thank you. And through the chair, I think it's my limited understanding, but I think that, I think that it's public health who, who tests our bodies of water where people swim for levels of E coli and stuff. And yeah, so maybe we could just, I know it's a little veering away from this report, but maybe we could just hear back from you in a memo or something as to who is the regulatory body for the concerns raised by the delegates tonight? For things that are in the ground, in the ground underneath the water and what, what happens, what gets triggered when levels of those things are disrupted and could come up. Thank you.
What we'll do through you, Mr. Chair.
I'm also sure that our council representation on Lakeland's public health could also get that information from Dr. Pickett and maybe report back to us. It might save Mr. Seven Oski from doing a, a report. We'll get it back from public health. It's been duly moved and seconded. We'll go to a vote. And that's carried. We now move to 11K. Councillor Crowley had your hand up first and then councillor Heiki. And councillor Burke.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, your worship.
You're moving 11K?
I'll move it.
And councillor Heiki has seconded to start the debate. You have the floor, sir. Though I have yourself, councillor Heiki, the councillor Burke. And councillor Real.
May I continue?
I just, I just tried to get everybody in the right order on the speakers list.
Thank you, your worship. Last week, I made an amendment that it came from a good place and it came from the same level of concern that many of the people who came and delegated tonight came, came with. That it was, it's, it's, it's an opportunity for us to maybe do something. It is a scary situation to think of a building that has contaminants in it being demolished. So my intention was to bring out an amendment that directly tied environmental remediation to a demolition. As was mentioned last week by councillor Tougay in one of his rebuttals and your worship tonight in your opening statements, we don't have the powers of municipality to directly tie environmental remediation to, to a demolition. It is, I, I'm absolutely gobsmacked that we don't have the ability to do that. So what I would, I would, what I would like to do, and, and I'll, I'll ask CEO Raina is, I think that in order for this council to be able to move forward with some sort of plan of attack on what we can do for a site remediation, either, well, we have many contaminated sites around the city. Could we get some information specifically regarding what next steps we have available? Maybe what our limitations are, what can we do? And maybe what we can do to remediate some of the toxic sites that we have around the city? Because I think that's really important that we have a plan of attack. And if we get information from you, as well as other people who may have come and spoken tonight, maybe there's something that we can do to reach out to the provincial government and the Ministry of the Environment and actually maybe get something done or have someone liaise with us. So is that something that you can get to us, CEO Raina?
Mr. Raina, please.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Definitely we will, we will send a memo to whole council with all the detailed processes which are within our purview, as well as within the Ministry of Labor, whatever information we can pull up, we can, we can write in a memo. And we will also, based on my experience in, in Mississauga where there was a big demolition on the coal plants, I will reach out to my contacts there too and, and see what type of collaboration we can expect from the ministries at the provincial level.
That would be great. I'd appreciate that. Thank you, sir. I do have a couple of questions, if I may, your worship.
Continue. I'll let you know where your, your time is.
Uh, I see that Jody Drum and Dean Finley are here tonight. Thank you both for coming. I, I think this would be a question meant for you, but what, what provincial safeguards are in place to prevent a possibly contaminated building being demolished and further contaminating the air, further contaminating the site? Or like other, other delegates have mentioned tonight, unsettling some of the contaminants that are in the ground below it?
Mr. Drum, please.
Through you, Chair. There's nothing really in the Building Code Act that deals with dust or material on the site. It'll have to come from another ministry, perhaps the Ministry of Environment or the Ministry of Labor for control.
Continue councillor Crowley.
Sorry, did you say, Jody, can you repeat that again? Just there's no, did you say that there's? Sorry, Mr. Mr. Drum, did you say that there was no safeguarding place for airborne pollutants or anything like that? Or did I misunderstand?
There's no enforcement within the Building Code Act to deal with dust.
So how would, if I may, through you, Chair.
Continue.
How, how would, for example, let's just say, a building the size of some of the buildings that are on the GE site being brought down, which I believe in the report, and I could be incorrect, mentioned asbestos inside it? How would that be handled? Would that be handled like any other demolition of any other building? Or would they have to take some special care and concern with it?
Mr. Drum, please.
Through you, Chair. The owner would have to contact the ministries for Ministry of Environment and that, and have them involved from the start.
Okay. And do they have rules and regulations in place that can, that would allow, oh, sorry, through you, Chair. Would they have rules or regulations in place that would potentially, that would, that would force them to remove any asbestos from the site or any contaminants from the building before they break it down? Are you aware of any or?
Mr. Drum, please.
Through you, Chair. I'm not aware of any. That's not my scope of work. That would be the expertise of other ministries.
Okay.
A question to Mr. Drum, what position does Mr. Drum hold in the city of Peterborough?
Mr. Drum, please, to identify your position.
Through you, Chair. I'm the acting chief building official with the city of Peterborough.
Through the chair, you can't be the acting chief building officer. That has to come through council. Council is the one that chooses the chief building officer for the city of Peterborough. So when did this happen at this council? When your name was brought forward? Because that's the role we choose who the chief building officer is.
Mr. Nelson, could you?
Under the Building Code Act of 1992, we choose who the building, the chief building officer is. Not staff, not anybody else, council.
Mr. Nelson, could you comment, please?
Through the chair, Mr. Drum was previously named as the deputy chief building official. Upon Mr. Finley retiring, the role has been sanctioned to Mr. Drum. And at which point, upon a permanent appointment or a permanent hire of a chief building official, that would be named and designated through council.
Well, when is that going to happen? Because we need a chief building officer that can go to the GE site to look at what the remediation is and what the, what needs to be done in the site? Because that job, or that has to come to council that we okay who the chief building officer under the Building Code Act of 1992. Not staff choosing someone, we choose who the building, the chief building officer is.
Mr. Nelson, please.
Through the chair, again, it's my understanding that the Mr. Drum was named under the role of the chief building official as the deputy chief and would act in that function at the times in which the chief building official is not present. And as I say, through that, through the future, basically, acquisition of a new chief building official that will be named and, and council will basically place function in that.
Um, through the chair, so we don't have a chief building officer because Mr. Finley is retired. So here we are looking at a decision to make of whether demolish or allow a site to be demolished. And we don't have a chief building officer to do the job for the city of Peterborough.
Mr. Raina, please, you want to respond?
Because we choose who it is, that's council, not staff. Even though you might have an assistant chief building officer, that job should have came here and it should have came in a motion here to us of choosing who that is, whether you're going out to search for that person or internally the name comes there. But we choose who that building official is.
Mr. Raina, please.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Mr. Mayor. I just want to respect, respectfully say here that being a deputy CBO, Mr. Jody, first of all, we should not be discussing, I fully understand what is the, what you want to ask. But in his role as a deputy CBO, he has filled this role many times. Many times when, when the CBO goes on vacation. And to, to answer your question about the hiring of the CBO, we are in the process of doing the job review. And when we bring the new CBO, that appointment will come to the council for approval.
Now we're marching to a date of November the 7th of General Electric wants demolish their site, 22. So who is going to be that official? That should be the chief building official for the city of Peterborough. No, I have no, I have the deepest respect for Mr. Drum, but we should have had after Mr. Finley retired, then there should have been a, a name or a going out and searching for a chief building officer, and we should have had that. Right now, we don't have a chief building officer, as far as I'm concerned, to go out and look at the GE site or make a decision for us to demolish buildings. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Mr. Raina, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to say that Mr. Jody is fully capable of doing the, performing the duties as an acting CBO. We have full trust in him. And the process of hiring the CBO is happening and it will come to the council.
Really care if you have, on the unbridled?
Sir, respectfully, I do care.
Well, I, I don't, I am, I am, I am the council and the one that is choosing the chief building official, not you.
Sir, first of all, respectfully, please don't raise your voice. I don't appreciate that. And I'm, then when I'm as a CEO, I'm telling you that he's quite capable. He has done the role. So I don't want to go beyond this, sir. He will be continuing and he will be the point person for the GE demolition still further notice.
And we're moving on. Councillor Crowley, you have the floor. And Mr. Potts wants to respond to one of your questions. Mr. Potts, please.
Your worship, if it assists, I understand the question is directed toward other provincial regimes outside of the demolition permit process that would relate to demolition at this site. And I just want to qualify my answer to that question by pointing out to council that demolition, strictly speaking, is not on the agenda this evening. Council has an Ontario Heritage Act decision to make with a time limit that council's been advised about. But just necessarily going down that rabbit hole, if I may characterize it as such. There are other provincial regulations and standards that are not administered by the chief building official. The council has heard that the chief building official has the specific and exclusive statutory duty and power to administer a, a permit process, building or demolition. And it's a, it's a prescribed regime. I will add, council heard earlier this evening from a deputant about general municipal act powers and the possibility, I will say that section 14 of the municipal act expressly prohibits trying to regulate the demolition permit process by municipal bylaw. My advice on that point would be to disregard the advice, which should not be given to my client in any event.
So, Mr. Potts, that would be the conflict between bylaws and statutes, is that correct?
Yeah, section 14 of the municipal law. And turning to the specific question that's asked, during the meeting I've assembled just a few examples. And these are regulations that I suspect all of them apply, but certainly several of them do apply. There's a regulation under the Environmental Protection Act, Ontario Regulation 419 of 05, air pollution, local air quality. Except for certain contaminants, heat, sound, vibration or radiation, no person shall construct, alter, demolish, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, of anything so that a contaminant is carried beyond the limits of property on which the demolition is being carried out. So that's the, that's the air pollution, the, the obligation of an owner carrying out a demolition outside of what our, our colleagues in the building department will, will be dealing with. That's an obligation that an owner has. So everything is, that's been discussed about contaminants going beyond the, the limits of the, of the property, that's regulated. Secondly, the general regulation respecting waste management under the Environmental Protection Act. Designation of waste, the following are designated as waste for regulation under that statute. Brick, corrugated cardboard, concrete, drywall, steel and wood. And that's with respect to demolition. There are source separation programs that are required in a large demolition project under Ontario Regulation 103 of 94. And the waste to be provided for in a source separation program includes brick, important cement, concrete, steel and wood. There is a requirement under a Regulation 102 of 94 under the Environmental Protec, excuse me, Protection Act, requiring waste audits and a waste reduction work plan. There are regulations under the Occupational Health and Safety Act, these have been referred to earlier, earlier this evening, that address various safety standards related to demolition projects. And again, that does relate to people on site. There are regulations under the Occupational Health and Safety Act, Oreg 278 of 05, designated substances, asbestos on construction projects and buildings and, and repair operations. Those are just examples of provincial standards not administered by the city with respect to demolition outside of the demolition permit process. Thank you.
Councillor Crowley, you're still the floor.
Uh, thank you, sir. Through you, Chair, thank you, Commissioner Potts, for providing that information because I think that's, that's sort of what I was looking for.
Councillor Crowley, you have one minute left of your first five. Do you want to take your second five now?
Uh, yeah, I might as well take my second five now.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Let me just see here, I have so many questions. We heard one delegate tonight mentioned the Ontario Heritage Act. And I know that, that that's one of the things that I'm a little bit concerned about as well is, uh, maybe this is for Commissioner Potts, maybe you can answer this as well, is, is, is anything that we are doing or anything that we are considering tonight, is it, is it in contravention of the Ontario Heritage Act?
Mr. Potts, please.
Um, your worship, I, like others, I've, I've scanned media recently and there's been a lot of, I will say misleading information. Uh, there is no process to delist the property, at least that I'm aware of. Um, it's already listed. The, the question that's before council is exactly the question, the motion in question that was carried at general committee is precisely within the scope of what the Ontario Heritage Act contemplates. And I'll just say a couple of points, if I may, your worship, about that. I, I, I think it partly, the process following the act is what actually is happening now and it's, it's kind of new to, to the council. Because historically, my understanding is that matters would be referred directly without consulting council to the heritage committee. The process in question, where the notice and intention to demolish is given to the council by the owner, contemplates the council will make an initial determination. And in this case, a determination- And in this case, a determination with respect to heritage impact uh assessment that the owner is commissioned and provided without being required to do so. So absent, absent that basic uh whether one brings it to be complete, accurate, appropriate, prepared uh for an owner. Those are all relevant considerations, but the fact is, it's it's the thing that council has within a time limit. So the 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 ball is entirely in council's court at the moment and the issue is does council intend conditionally to initiate the process by which a designation could result by the passing of a bylaw? The next step is if council, the motion is exactly the uh appropriate at at the moment because if council were conditionally intending to do so, it has to consult with its heritage committee if it has one. And the city has a heritage committee. So any proposal to designate has to go to the heritage committee first. Now, I've read uh that there's some issue um about who who calls, who defines what's referred to the heritage committee? And the answer is it's council. It's council's intention. And then council relays that intention to the heritage committee, which considers what council is intending to do. Heritage committee reports back to council. Ideally within the time limited because the deadline for council to give notice of intention to designate, if that's what it does, is by November seventh. And that means publication in a newspaper, giving notice to the trust, giving notice to the owner. So so practically, it has to happen before November seventh. And lastly, I think I mentioned this last week, council should assume that November seventh is the deadline. I know that the motion refers to, subject to extensions that may be negotiated, the statutory process is what council should assume i- is the deadline.
Continue, Counselor Crowley.
Um uh thank you, worship. So so uh if if I understand what you're saying, November seventh is a drop dead date for this. So if this, if this were to, um if we were to uh vote against these recommendations tonight, that means that uh we're not, basically, we're not making a decision and the demolition will go ahead.
Mister Potts, please.
The uh the owners um the owner can't proceed with the demolition except by giving sixty days notice. What the decision if council chooses to make it and give notice, like make the decision to do so, but also to give notice of intention to designate does? Excuse me, if there are any permits that have been issued before that date, um then they're they're void to the extent, to that extent, the during the interim period uh between the giving of the notice and and the data on which council may ultimately designate following the objection period in that in that process uh is treated as if the notice of intention to designate has been already been given. So the notice of intention to designate protects to the extent of the designation against a demolition. So the clock is running and it's council's prerogative to make a decision. And absent a decision to designate, then um the owner will have the right to demolish. And just to be clear and I'll I'll defer to my colleagues, I don't think an application has actually yet been submitted and and a and a permit has not been issued. But again, I want to underscore, whether it has or it hasn't is really beyond the scope of what council should be considering at the moment. And for open session, I'll be brief on this point. If there's a future dispute, then the recordings of what council was considering and debating about will be relevant.
Counselor Crowley? I think that'll do for now. Thank you, your worship. I appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner.
Counselor, Counselor Hakey, for your first five.
Thank you very much, your worship. My object here for me is I'm trying to get fact separated from opinion. And that's a problem because I I do need facts. A lot of the questions uh Counselor Crowley asked were ones that I had, so I may ask them again in a different form because I like things very simple, if that's okay. And we're crossing heritage with demolition, they a- as much as they're uh separated, they they seem to be going together tonight, so I'm going to be crossing that uh bound myself, your worship. So I've heard a lot of opinions. So Commissioner Potts, can we compel GE to have a remediation plan as suggested by Mister Miskin? I think you've already said no, but that's a simple yes or no answer.
Mister Potts, please.
I may actually have to defer to the chief billing official, but my understanding of the demolition permit process and applicable law for that purpose is that the answer is no. And and I've I've made the statement earlier that a bylaw to try to amend, a municipal act bylaw exercising broad powers to try to amend what the demolition permit process contemplates would be outside the city's jurisdiction.
Thank you. So that is a no. Can a municipality attach a condition to the Ontario Building Code as suggested by one of the councillors earlier tonight referencing a city that has done so? I don't know if that's to you or the chief building inspector.
It it.
Or acting chief buildings.
Your worship, it may require clarification from the councillor who made the statement, but uh what I heard was a bylaw compelling an additional code requirement.
Yes.
And if that, if that's the the statement, the answer is no. The the building code is is stat- is prescribed uh by the province.
Thank you very much. And through through your wor- your worship, um I think we already discussed that the listing of the property from the registry, which we are not doing, correct?
That. Mister Potts, please.
That's my understanding. And again, I've seen a a letter that suggested that that's the process that was being contemplated. I think we read that in a newspaper article as well. And it's not true. The issue the council is is considering is whether it exercises jurisdiction.
Point of order, Counselor Jacob.
My point of order is that we've had the Chair of PACAC come and speak. We do not have a director of ha- of a manager of heritage here in the city of Peterborough. Um we have the uh for for the commissioner, uh with all due respect, Commissioner Potts, it it it's very clear that this PACAC committee designated the whole of one oh seven Park Street North as a listed property. So for it not to be considered as a whole listing and to be separated out by council according to something that GE has designed is delisting what what PACAC has listed as a whole property. Thank you.
I take your point of order, but I'll have Mister Potts uh respond, please.
Um your worship, I should probably start with what my role is before council. Uh it's.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
It's to advise, it's to provide legal advice. It's not really a forum for debate for a number of reasons.
Counselor Hakey, continue, please.
Thank you very much. Um frankly, in the absence of a a uh head of our Heritage Committee, I will accept uh our city solicitor's advice uh on this. And I think, what do they say? Something about a fool not listening to his lawyer. The other question that I have, uh your worship, through you to uh Commissioner Potts. And I think we've answered this, but again, I'd like the simple yes or no. If we pause this tonight or refer this back, does this, does the clock stop ticking or does it carry on?
Mister Potts, please.
If I may briefly finish the answer to my previous question.
Yes, indeed, sir.
The letter, the letter from the Chair of the Heritage Committee. I'll just read from the letter itself as to why I responded to a question about delisting. A reference to an excerpt from the Ontario Heritage Act and then the letter goes from there. The excerpt is the following subsection four. If the council of a municipality has appointed a municipal heritage committee, PACAC, the council shall, before including a property that has not been designated under this part in the register or removing the reference to a property from the register, consult with this municipal heritage committee. The letter is about listing or delisting a property, and that's why I responded to the question that way. Turning, turning to the question that's just been asked, excuse me. Uh the answer is no. The the clock, the clock runs, the clock started running on September eighth, sixty days, November.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you, your worship.
Um thank you, Mary Leo. I'd like to move the original um staff recommendations from the report and I'd like to add um an item D.
That's contrary to what's on the table. Counselor Burke, we're talking about eleven K has been put forward. It's been due. Sorry?
It hasn't been ratified.
It's been moved and seconded. Mister Clerk, please.
Thanks, your worship, for the purposes of debate. We have Counselor Crowley and Counselor Hakey have moved the uh the recommendations that are before council in their package this evening.
Thank you. Um may I add a a D? An additional recommendation?
Uh thanks, your worship. Uh amendments uh are in order, subject to the procedure bylaw, one of which indicates that the amendment may not be contrary to the main.
Thank you. Um so I'll say my amendment, please, and then uh give my remarks. Um the.
I I'm sorry, Counselor Burke, I couldn't hear you.
I'll 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 present my amendment, which is in addition to the recommendations here, so I'm going to add a D to these recommendations, if that's okay.
You got a second there for that? Second, Counselor Jacob, proceed, Counselor Burke.
Um thank you. Where did it go?
And this will be the item D.
Yes. Um so item D is that uh staff come back to council with an outline for a health and safety plan for the G site and its broader impacts. Can I speak to that now?
Go ahead.
Um thank you. You know, I think that, I think that um the thing that's happening here, whether you're on the the side that I'm on to support the staff recommendations for heritage or not, I think we can all agree that we are moved by the stories that we've heard from delegates um coming here and telling us the stories of how they've been impacted by the toxic legacy at General Electric. And in the meeting last week, we were sort of like fumbling our way around as to how can we impose any guidelines to do with the site based on this request to demolish um a a portion of the list of the property that's listed. And we were sort of scrambling to find ways in which we can impose some sort of um oversight. Attached, attached to this report. So if you're concerned about what we've heard from the delegates tonight, if you're concerned about what is happening on that site and where do we come in as council in terms of having any oversight to continue this conversation on, to pause it, to to deal with the community that is in need of consultation on this, well, the leverage is right in front of us. The leverage is that we take the staff recommendations to look at the heritage value of the site. Our own heritage value of the site, not what General Electric is proposing, our own through the staff recommendation. So I imagine now that if we voted these down tonight, A through C, it would go back to the original staff recommendations. And I'm I'm trying to propose that that is our leverage. That is what can buy us some time to continue this discussion on and to not have it be done tonight. And I speak to this as someone who cares deeply about my community. Um I care about the residents that I represent that live on the site. Um residents on Albert Street, Chamberlain, Patterson, Lake Street, Rink Street, Wolf Street, Rutherford, Adeline, Park Place, these are my constituents. My constituents also use Little Lake. Which is downstream of a dedicated sewer sewer line that comes from the factory. These people have been talking to me and they've been wondering about what's happening. They've been wondering about the monitoring they see from General Electric along that path and what is happening. And the answer is, to everyone who's wondering, is that nothing is happening. Nothing is happening. This demolition, I believe, is another way for the company to distance itself, to further itself from liability, to further itself from taking any meaningful action to repair the damage it has caused. They're also trying to further themselves from the property taxes that they pay on this site in a time when the city is desperate for property tax revenue and industrial land. General Electric has come to us asking to demolish a portion of buildings that are listed, which makes up most of the former factory site. A site that defines Peterborough's industrial past, but also its toxic legacy. With this re- request, I believe comes enormous responsibility. Yet, this process to me feels more like a formality than an opportunity. We're told our role is limited. We're told the city doesn't. Point of order, I can't, can we not be interrupted while we speak, please? We're told our role is limited. The city doesn't own the land, the Ontario Building Code governs the demolition, and the Ministry of the Environment holds the regulatory authority. But just because our power is is limited does not mean that our responsibility is limited.
You want to use your second five now?
I'm saddened that there isn't the political will, even the political curiosity to see how that, how this request from General Electric could be used as a moment in time to secure real accountability and remediation. We've seen what happens when communities accept the minimum. In New York State, General Electric was eventually forced to spend over a billion dollars, a billion dollars dredging PCB contamination from the Hudson River decades after the fact, and still the work isn't done. They did the bare minimum until the law and the people demanded more. And I ask you, how's our water? How's our land? Here in Peterborough, we could have taken this demolition request and used it as leverage, not to punish, but to protect our people, to protect our land, to protect our water. We could have asked, not demanded, but asked that if General Dr- Dr. Electric is going to dismantle this site, show us how you're going to protect residents nearby and the environment. We could have asked what air quality monitoring at the fence line is going to look like during demolition. And how is, how is, how is this going to be public publicly posted to, how are they going to publicly post these results in real time? We could have asked for transparency, for General Electric to share any recent environmental studies or soil testing with the community. We could have asked for clear plans of what happens after the buildings come down to prevent contaminated materials from migrating off off-site through stormwater. And we could have tried to tie any demolition approval to real heritage conservation, not just plaques, but meaningful preservation of what remains. We also have the ability, I believe, to expropriate the land and deduct the cost of remediation from the purchase price. None of these examples, I believe, are out of reach, except maybe the last one. They're reasonable. They're reasonable community protective steps, the kind of measures measures other municipalities have taken in similar situations. But what we're doing instead is we're accepting GE's plans on GE's terms. GE's plans on their terms. And trusting in the same provincial oversight that has allowed this camp contamination to sit unresolved for generations. This demolition is not just a technical exercise. I believe that it's a moral one. The question before us is not only whether these buildings come down safely, but whether we have the courage to expect more from one of the companies that built and then abandoned the city. I'll continue to support any effort from anyone that brings transparency, transpa- some transparency, remediation and dignity to this process and to this situation. But tonight, I need to be clear, I believe this is a missed opportunity.
Thank you very much. Uh to the amendment, I have, I have two lists going out. On the amendment, Counselor Lachica, to the amendment, please. And then we'll get back to the main speakers.
Yes, tha- thank you, through you, through you, um your worship, to the amendment. We can't do enough as elected leaders to listen, to analyze what's in front of us and to protect the citizens of our community. And if ever there were a situation where we needed to do that, it would be now. If we don't ask, if we don't make demands of the corporation, we are not doing our due diligence. We, we may not have a building code that addresses things like dust. And and as as Jody Drummond said tonight, that isn't his. that isn't his purview, it's the ministry's purview. I agree with that because I've been talking to the district manager for Peterborough at the Ministry of the Environment. I've been making communications and I've spoken to professors at Trent University this week, environmental lawyers who have said, yes, indeed, we can make demands. We can ask the ministry. We, we can make it known to the ministry. We can notify them of what could be happening tonight. And they could do something regulatory in their assessment because of whatever hazard that may exist. Do something regulatory about it. They could even make a stop order. There was something come to me from, from a lawyer this week. In fact, the lawyer delegated tonight, and it was that GE has already been given orders in 2024 regarding discharge of contaminants for a property that they intended to sell in 2024. Maybe nobody knows about that, but I found out about it this week. And, and in that regard, the director's order from the ministry confirms contamination with PCPs, TCE, other carcinogens, and requires GE successor, if they're to sell it, to maintain containment and monitoring of systems. This order was written when they planned to sell parts of the property, not demolish buildings even. But any demolition that disturbs soil or breaks those caps could breach this order. It is the job of the Ministry of the Environment to do regulatory things in a big situation like we have here. So our due diligence is with the ministry because they're the ones that would be supervising this or that the accountability would be through. So we need to make those demands. And earlier, it was said, well, perhaps, perhaps the councillor who spoke about other municipalities could speak to it. Well, exactly, I also learned that across Ontario, cities such as Hamilton, Oshawa and Toronto have made, unlike us, have made air quality monitoring and dust suppression standards a normal part of redevelopment. Peterborough deserves that same standard of care. Municipalities do have the authority, according to environmental law under Ontario's Building Code Act, to attach public safety conditions to demolition permits. A council can demand that. A council can say, no, we will not agree and vote for a demolition permit if we don't have an independent environmental assessment, continuous air quality monitoring, dust and debris containment, and coordination and advance notice to neighborhoods and, and organizations, schools, et cetera. We can have that be part of our expectation, expectation, anytime we would vote for an intention to demolish. And, and this is the information I have researched. And for, for the former speaker who said a fool not listening to its lawyer is not a good thing. Well, I'm no fool and I know that there are different legal opinions about what's going on here. And it is our job as a councillor to do our due diligence. And if each and every one of us around this table has not tried to reach out to the district manager for the City of Peterborough in the Ministry of the Environment and looked at any samples or exemplars and found out what's really going on at GE, then we have not done our due diligence and we need to do a deferral of this. This clock started on September 8th. And I laid eyes, and this council laid eyes on the documentation that was provided to us through Sat Staff's report from GE on Monday's general committee meeting. That is outrageous. The clock started on September 8th. We were not convened as a council to be told about what GE plans or doesn't plan to do, any details. We're not provided to counsel so that we could do our job to make a good decision to protect our community. That's why we're here. That's why we're having this debate. And we need to take stock tonight and ask ourselves if this is the time to be approving and rushing through a permit intention of demolition under the guise of a heritage motion. This is the mechanism that GE is using to get what they want and not have to have any accountability to remediate the toxic waste that's sent underneath those buildings. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Go to you, Mr. Potts, before we go to the next speaker, Counselor Hakey on the amendment. And then we have Counselor Riel on the amendment, too. Mr. Potts?
Is there a question?
I thought there was a question.
Oh, a question to jurisdiction on the amendment.
As, if I may, just confirm the, the question is clarity about whether it's consistent or inconsistent with the main motion, which ultimately is the chair's determination. But in terms of staff understanding what, what the amendment means, like my reaction to it is that it, it's either inconsistent or it's consistent, depending on what it actually means. If staff are expected to simply at some point in the future come back to council with an outline for health and safety plan for the GE site and its broader impacts, the, the report might resemble the answer that I gave earlier this evening about the other provincial regulations that are in play. And we would confirm which ones actually are, if and when the demolition ever proceeds with respect to an application that's not yet been made. If the wording of the amendment is to somehow delay or to attach to a demolition permit process the matters that staff might report back on, then I think it is subject to, of course, it's the chair's determination, initially in consultation with the, with the city clerk. But if it were read that way, then it would be, you know, consistent with the advice earlier given. I think inconsistent with the main motion.
Thanks, Mr. Potts. Counselor Hakey, please, on the-
Thank you very much, Your Worship. You know, I don't pretend to corner the concern or the empathy that we have for the people in the, in the city. And it is legitimate, I believe. Curiosity was mentioned where we need the curiosity, and I believe I, myself, I delivered that with asking questions of clarity. Now I'm at a point, Counselor Lachica just mentioned these bylaws that have been passed. That's one thing, I understand passing them, but if they're effective or if they're in order, I don't know. Our council has indicated to me that they may not be, but maybe there's a bit of clarity there. And I don't know if Commissioner Potts, through you, Your Worship, is aware of those bylaws that have been passed in cities like Hamilton and Oshawa? And if they have been tried legally or not?
Point of order. Point of order. Just very respectfully, very, very respectfully, my point of order is that I don't believe that that question has anything to do with the proposed amendment. I'm, I'm not asking to create a bylaw.
I believe it does, too. Thank you.
Your Worship. I honestly, I don't think I can keep up to the different narratives on what the law requires and doesn't require with respect to the issue that is before council. It's getting challenging. I'm being put in a position of debating, commenting on statements that have been made about the existence of bylaws that if they exist, as described, to the extent of impacting a demolition permit process, I would say they're invalid. But here I am in an open council meeting, being asked on the spot to comment on something I haven't seen. Advice, not debating. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, definitely the correct wording, yeah.
Thank you, Your Worship, and my apologies to Commissioner Potts because I am not intending to put him on the spot, but I need information. So I will accept your information as spoken. Thank you.
Through the chair, first off, I wish the font size was bigger so that I can, my eyeballs here, I'm trying to read the amendment.
It's challenging.
Speaking to the amendment, certainly my comments about the chief building officer was not to embarrass anybody, and certainly Mr. Drum. My question before I talk about the amendment, has Mr. Drum been to the site to view what GE wants to do?
Your Chair, no, I haven't.
So that was what my question was being because there's two things here. General Electric wants a to demolish some buildings, but the guise is under heritage. The buildings that GE listed, the ones along Park Street are probably, have some historical use to them or, or that were built years ago, but they're being used by an engineering, the engineering part of General Electric, which they have to because of the motors that we build at General Electric. The other buildings along Monaghan Road, the ones that were in the blue, are being rented by DWTX. So if they have some heritage that isn't, they're renting the buildings. The rest of them, they want to demolish. The question I was asking in the amendment here is that when you're going to make a decision to demolish something, you would think that we would have somebody to go and look at the site and see if what the building shape would be, but what is the contaminants? Not talking about what's under the ground, the building itself. We had a number of people here speaking tonight about what, either they worked at General Electric and what happened to them, or what happened to their, their coworkers or their loved ones. Then you had neighbors coming and telling you about what issues they have about the demolition and could happen to their neighborhood. And I know that one of the presenters, when I talked about this letter that I had from Don't Grow Any Root Vegetables, it was verified by Natasha because she had that letter. The company you're dealing with, I worked for them for thirty eight and a half years. And it become apparent to me when I was watching the people that I worked with die at a very young age, that I needed to do something about it. And I worked for a lot of years to get General Electric to clean up the plant and make it safe. Then when I became the President of the Union and the late John Ball came to me and said, you made a commitment to me, if you became president, that you would do something about the General Electric site. And I did that by holding the largest intake clinic in Canada, report a thousand people through in one day. And Ocal was the, the venue or the people that we hired to do that. I think I alluded to last week when I asked them, what did you take from this one day event? We never seen so many chemicals used anywhere, any place in the world. And we never have seen so many people, but the amount of diseases in one place, anywhere in Canada. That's the legacy. I made a living at General Electric. My family all worked there. We all made a living. I went to work to make a living, not to die. And the same thing with the people that I worked with, went to General Electric to make a living, not to die. And there's a legacy here. And I think it behooves us and council, what you heard tonight, not only from the people that came here and told you about their experience with General Electric, but also the concerns they have for their neighborhood, that we have to do something to help these people. Whether you can hide behind the legislation and we don't have the right to do this, I think you, we as a council have to do something. And so therefore, I would, I will be, the amendment here follows on the heels of the motion that I was going to make is defer this until an environmental assessment could be done by our chief building official and coordination with a consulting firm that does the environmental assessment, but also the heritage of these buildings. And I think that that's what we need to do as a council here, is to protect not only the neighborhood, but the city. Because if you're looking for a legacy of what's going to happen, the parking lot on Monaghan Road is fenced off because it's too contaminated to sell. It's loaded with PCBs. The parcel of land that used to be the instrument lab on Stewart Street is fenced off because it's too contaminated to sell. Yes. So you're looking at what a company is trying to do under the Heritage Act. True thing is, we're going to demolish the building and then we're going to leave a legacy for Peterborough for the end of time, fencing off, seeding the property, planting a few trees, but never doing the complete remediation. And that is what's underneath the ground that's leaching out today. And when there's, I think, Counselor Lachica has talked about arena incidents or whatever, that's going into Little Lake. I can remember when, when the Little Lake, a couple of years ago, when they dropped Little Lake, they were cautioned about the sediment in the bottom of that lake, that if it ever moved, anybody from Little Lake all the way down to Rice Lake, their drinking water would be affected for the end of time. They would never be able, because of the contaminants in the bottom of Little Lake from General Electric because a stormwater pipe went right from General Electric right into Little Lake. So I asked council, and certainly some of us voted last week, I want you to look at yourself and say, can you walk away tonight? And this is the legacy for this council to vote not to help the people, but the community itself of what we're asking here to do tonight. That is, if that, if that's you want your legacy, going forward of what you did on council, this is a salient moment right here tonight. Tell you right now. Because I know from working there for thirty eight and a half years, exactly what General Electric is up to. And I've dealt with them professionally. I've dealt with them as the union president there, and I know exactly how these people operate, so.
Your Worship, I'll try and do this delicately. I'd like to, I'd like to get out some answers from staff, but I have to try and talk to the amendment. So, you know, maybe we better off to be with it first, but maybe I'll just try it this way. Your Worship, I see Mr. Finley in the audience, and I'm wondering if Mr. Finley is here to answer any questions of, of councillors. I wonder if you might ask Mr. Finley that.
Mr. Finley, you're prepared to answer some questions?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Baldwin. This may sound funny, but only at the agreement of Mr. Drum. Mr. Drum is the acting chief building official for the city. I'm not, but if Mr. Drum wants me to participate in helping answer a question, I would do it, yes.
Mr. Drum, would you allow Mr. Finley to answer some questions?
Your Chair, but-
But she, Counselor Baldwin?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at the the comment that was made about the amendment here and I, I know, Dean, you have a lot of experience in the building field, as does Mr. Drum. But I don't believe your role, or your role when you're the chief building official, was to provide or do environmental assessments. Is that correct?
Mr. Finley, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Baldwin, that's absolutely correct, yes. We have, as a building official in the Ontario Building Code, you have zero involvement with environmental issues other than maybe receiving certain types of approvals from other agencies. But we do not involve ourselves in any kind of environmental work or assessment whatsoever.
So, so, Your Worship, thank you, Mr. Finley, for the answer. Given what I've just heard from Mr. Finley, I don't believe that the amendment's in order, and so I'd vote against it. But I, when we get back to the main motion, depending on what council decides to do, I'd like to reserve another couple of questions for Mr. Finley, as long as Mr. Drum is okay with that.
Sure, I think we've established, Mr. Drum, that you're prepared to allow Mr. Finley to, to, to provide answers.
Thank you, Mr. Drum, and thank you, Mr. Finley.
Yes, Counselor Burke?
Just point of order for the chair. I think there, it's being implied that this motion is being is is a directive given to the chief building officer. That's not it. This motion, and the language is simple enough that it allows for our staff, public health, if necessary. This is an umbrella clause around all the stuff we've been discussing for the last two weeks. It has nothing to do with the bylaw, has nothing to do with directing the chief building officer in any way. It's an umbrella, it's an umbrella amendment that is attached to the the nature of what we're discussing.
I I accept that, but the issue of environmental suspect was raised, whether we have the authority to do so, and Mr. Finley answered that question.
That that I'm not talking about an environmental.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Counselor Bier, please, to the amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'll be quick. I'm going to support the amendment. I've read it a few times. Uh, to me, it's very reasonable. It's simple. It's a health and safety plan. It doesn't mention delay or deferral. It doesn't mention a timeline that will affect the November date. There's no even specific mention of demolition. It's a very broad plan for the entire site. Um, and I think it will ensure that we're fully compliant with provincial environmental health and safety laws. And the report, the plan simply may be that these, this is the legislation and this is, it's being met or not. This is the environmental uh expectation, it's being met or not, so I think we owe it to the community. So I don't see this as uh specifically as an environmental assessment. I don't see it specifically as folks on demolition. There's no timeline or de- date. I think it's a very broad plan that will probably bring in the legislation that's needed to be met and whether it's being net met, and so I'll I'll support the amendment. Mayor Liel, thanks for listening.
Thanks, Counselor Bier. Counselor Chica, second five on the amendment.
Thank you very much. Through you, your worship, um, just appreciating the comments of the previous speaker. Um, this is simply um asking staff to to uh provide us with a health and safety plan. And I'm sure that would require a third party uh to to consult with that um with internal supports and expertise, of course. But um, you know, I think it speaks to the special situation that is GE. You know, we've heard tonight that, you know, for a hundred years, that there has been an experience of denial and obfuscation of the health and safety risks and hazards. So to ignore that and and to not ask for something like this, I think would be naive and wishful thinking. And um, you know, we need to be, as a municipality, as the other municipalities I've mentioned, dedicated to brownfield redevelopment. Um, and this is, this is, this piece that Counselor Burke is is raising is is a strategy for addressing brownfields and remediation to brownfield, whether it's a demolition or if it's for sale. Um, our city has an abundance of it, and we would do well to be considering these things. I'm fully in support of this. It speaks to the specifics of this site. And what we wish as a council to be done in in negotiation with GE. Thank you.
Counselor Baldwin, for a second, on the amendment.
Yeah, just on the amendment, your worship, I I guess I would have more comfortable with the amendment as written. I mean, when Counselor Burke responded, when I, when I read staff, I read city staff, and I think the councillor had just said, public health and and a variety of other people. The reason I asked um Mr. Finley about his role, his previous role as a chief building inspector was the environmental assessment piece. And I guess the question I have regarding the amendment is, A, there's no timeline. B, I have no idea on staff who's going to be able to do, to do that health and safety plan and when we might see it, and does it have any impact on what we're discussing tonight with respect to the heritage? So I I think we're, I mean, I'm I'm certainly concerned about the site as everybody is, no question about that. I just don't think it fits with A, B, and C. Um, but I certainly respect what the councillor's done. And again, your worship, when I read staff, I don't, I don't read other people that are maybe ancillary to city staff. So who are the staff? Could they be identified? When is it coming? Um, and who does it? Um, and Counselor Chica just referenced a third party. Does that go to tender? Or does that, how does that facilitate it? So that's, that's kind of part and personally, your worship, why I kind of brought it forward in terms, I just don't think it fits here, but yes, I'd be concerned about the environment, absolutely.
Counselor Dougie.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Liel. I was loathe to to enter into this discussion, but I think it's opportunity to speak. Uh, firstly, uh, the motion as presented, uh, it strikes me that the motion would have been better worded if it applied to all sites within the city that have known contaminations, all sites, not just GE. This council, you may recall, and I'm going to stay openly, that I had to declare an interest on a particular property near my residential property. And I'm speaking to the proposed land use, but I'll speak to the process. This motion, this type of language was not presented by this council. And I think it's a, it's, it's our duty, has been stated here, that we should be ensuring the safety and well-being of our receiving neighborhoods. That was sadly lacking in a previous decision made in this council chambers. I don't intend to criticize my colleagues, but the same process, the same due diligence, the same discussion just did not happen on another site that has known contamination in our community. So this motion strikes me, and I do support the need to ensure that our brownfield sites, your worship, to the, to the public, are appropriately addressed. But all we're talking about this evening is really, it's a demolition. The contaminants will remain. We have heard from our experts that there is other provincial legislation that will govern um and address um the safe remediation. But I think this motion, to specific to this motion, uh, your worship, it would strike me that it would have been more appropriately worded had it applied to not just GE, but all contaminated sites in our community. There are several gas stations that remain contaminated. There are several lands uh along our waterfront that are known contaminations uh or contaminated, excuse me. So I think it would be appropriate had it addressed all. But I am concerned, I just am concerned about um the particular attention being given to this site and our other sites in this community recently contemplated for redevelopment that for some reason did not have the same concern for area communities. Thank you for the opportunity.
Point of order, right? Yes, Counselor.
Um, thank you, uh, through you, your worship. Um, it's a disparaging remark to say that there is no concern for other areas of brownfield and other neighborhoods. That's absolutely false. If it's in reference to me, I speak for myself. I care as much and more about the outboard marine property because it's owned by us. We have to do our due diligence and we need to make sure that happens. So, so I just don't appreciate the assumption that there are councillors that don't care as much about these other brownfield areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Chica. Counselor Dougie, you had a point of order.
Thank you, your worship. My comment, uh, and again, I prefaced my remarks that I was loathe to add or add commentary. But I, and as an observation, as a property owner in proximity to a site that has known contamination, I just offered a general observation on this. That was my comment directly to all of council. Thank you.
I'll get to your, I'll get to your point of order now.
Yeah, I mean, my point is that um I, we're talking about mistruths. You know, the councillor had to declare on the site in question. He wasn't at those meetings to understand what conversations we did or didn't happen.
Mr., your worship, I will respond now with a point of order.
I, my point of order is on the floor.
Your point of order, I'll get back to Counselor Dougie's point of order.
Finished.
Finished. There. Counselor Dougie had a point of order.
Thank you, your worship. To be abundantly clear for the benefit of all, my declaration was with respect to change in land use. I'm only speaking now to the consequence results of a process and decision of which I did not take part of. But I'm certainly privy to the outcome. My only concern, your worship, is that this health and safety, this motion should be applying to all sites and perhaps would have benefited a recent decision made by this council on another brownfield site. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Dougie. Mr. Reader, who would be doing this work for the health and safety plan? Do we have to hire a consultant to do it? Is somebody in house going to do it? I I'm asking a question before I vote on your amendment.
I just have a point of order.
Yes.
I think it's important that I'm not asking for staff to come up with a health and safety plan. I'm asking them for for to come back to council with an outline, it says outline, so that they can tell us what would be needed from them and outside sources to create that plan. It says, staff come back to council with an outline of a of a health and safety plan for the GE site. That's it. I'm not asking them to come back with the actual plan. This, I'm taking this very slow and measured. I'm asking them to come back with an outline, whether that is including public health or or other people. That's up to them, but that, I I assume that will be included in the outline if it passes. Thank you.
I still got to get the CEO a comment because it's still very vague to me.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, I will defer it to Commissioner Nelson.
Mr. Nelson, please.
Through the chair, um, the motion as written um would be challenging for staff to come up with. Um, to believe this would typically be something that would fall out of the construction works in which the contractor would prepare as a body that would need a health and safety pers- process and procedure as it relates to specific works on the site. Um, not to say that there isn't health and safety overseeing regulations that could be cited, if that's what the intention of the, of the motion is asking about.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Perdell, on the amendment.
Yes, sir. First of all, we all care very, very deeply about our community and the neighbors, and to suggest otherwise is not fair at all. Um, to the amendment, um, I think um it it's a little bit misdirected, you know, that staff. Uh, these are questions for GE Verona to answer. It is going to be their plan. They have to follow all the provincial legislation uh through the ministries before they can proceed with this. It's for them to answer and reading their frequently asked questions and the report itself um and and various other comments that we've received from GE um officials. Um, they are saying that's early days. They plan on more opportunities for community consultation. As the plan's developed, uh, they will be communicating to the broader community. So I think the motion would be better um directed that that we ask um GE uh when it's available to provide to us directly the health and and safety plan uh for the GE demolition. Um, that I, I think that's who we have to ask. It's their site and their responsibility and their cost. Thank you.
Anything further? We have the amendment on the floor. We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. Now we'll go back now, Mr. Clerk, to the main motion as amended. And I'll go back to that speaker's list. Um, on the main amendment as, and the main motion as amended, I have Counselor Riel on that one. Counselor Riel.
I think I've already spoken enough. I think I would just like it all separated out.
Okay. Counselor Chica, to the main motion now as amended. You were next on on that speaker's list.
I'd like um to the the portion of of the motion that speaks to um delisting and and accepting the ERA report um and the buildings that that GE has has desired to see designated or with the potential to be designated, um, I would like to say that that is out of order. And, yeah. Based on the statements of 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 um the the expert that we had um from the Chair of PACAC expressing the desires of PACAC um that this be considered as it was listed as a unit, as a listing, that it should not be delisted by council. Thank you. Based on section four of the Heritage Act and and based by legal consultation that PACAC and has received. Thank you.
Counselor Riel's asked it to be separated out, so we'll be voting on each one as we go. Counselor Baldwin, please.
Yeah, thank, thank you, your worship, and through you to Mr. Finley. Dean, have you visited the General Electric site?
Through you, Mr. Chair to Counselor Baldwin, um, yes, a number of times.
So the question I have, your worship, is um you know, I understand um someone this evening, I can't remember the delegate, but they they said that one of the one of the um concerns they had was a smokestack. And I've heard it's, it's tumbling down. It's in in bad repair now. Could you confirm that, yes or no?
Through you, Mr. Chair to Counselor Baldwin, during the course of my time as CBO, um, we did have an application for demolition of the smokestack itself. I believe that was in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen for deteriorated condition. Um, the uh council of the day, I believe, and Commissioner or Director Appleby may uh confirm this, um, the former heritage preservation officer, um, uh, Mr. Hanson had conferred with council and received council's blessing to uh permit the uh smokestack to be removed outside of the heritage register that was in place on the property at the time, due to the condition of of the smokestack itself. Uh, if I recall correctly, the permit was applied for, but it was not issued and eventually withdrawn.
Um, and we've heard tonight, Mr. Finley, um, twenty nine of thirty three or twenty five of of the thirty three buildings would like to come down. Um, I'm just wondering, as briefly as you can, because I don't, I don't know, what would be the process of going that you would, that you would take to decommission those buildings? Would it, would it be building by building or a cluster of buildings? Um, that's carefully controlled, or would they come, would, would a demolition company come in and knock them all down? I'm just trying to get a sense of the process of decommissioning it, grouping it or all in one fell swoop or building by building. Could you, could you explain briefly how that might work?
Mr. Finley, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair to Counselor Baldwin, that that question's a bit beyond my expertise, the actual process. Um, the things that have to happen, such as under uh the Occupational Health and Safety Act, designated substance survey and remediation of designated substances happening prior to demolition, which is overseen by the other governmental agencies, that that either has to take place or be completed prior to the demolition. So all of those things, I think, have to be taken into their plan. But um that's not something really we would get into in a demolition permit discussion. Demolition permits are simply uh to ensure that the building's taken down in a structurally safe manner and that um associated services on the site are identified and capped and located for either full removal or future disconnection. But again, there's, there's no reference in our work to any of the environmental conditions.
Thank you for that, Mr. Finley.
Um, through the chair to Mr. Finley, you say you've been in the General Electric building several times. Um, was that to view um the state of the building itself? Um, I guess the question I have, I know there was some sort of remediation done for asbestos, but did you view any of the pipes that still had, um, they used to be covered with asbestos? Um, did you view any of that there, or was that, you said it's not, was that all on your purview? You just looked at the building and said they're in tough shape or um whatever, I mean, whatever conclusions you drew.
Through you, Mr. Chair to Counselor Riel. Through you, Mr. Chair to councillor Real. Through you, Mr. Chair to councillor Real. Some of the early visits were to discuss with GE staff the condition of some of the concrete panel roof systems in the building that were delaminating and, and falling in places. We wouldn't have paid any attention to any of the, the DSS work or any remediation that was done.
Through the chair to Mr. Finley, I'm reading from the, the, the legislation here. It says that in some cases, in some cases, provincial approvals, example under EPA, relevant regulations are required to disturb contaminated lands. The CBO may refuse a permit if those approvals are lacking again, applicable laws and constraint. You agree or disagree with that, that in the remediation or certainly taking down these buildings could have an impact on the, not only the site, but also the community upheld?
I think in terms of assessing that kind of impact, the Ministry of Environment would be the controlling decider on anything that happens in the ground. If the, there, there are parallel streams of oversight. So while they may obtain a demolition permit from us to do the work that they describe, as I said, we're really only looking at structural safety of the removal of the building and the location of services. The obligations on the owner to deal with the other agencies like the Ministry of Labor and Ministry of Environment, making calls about what might happen with regard to environmental conditions on site is not our purview.
Finley, and, and part of GE's plan is that they will hire their own consulting firm to do their assessment and the environmental assessment. So is it, is this something that when you were chief building officer, you would just take this as carte blanche that, you know, thank you very much GE, I read your paper here, you look like you're doing your due diligence? Or would you, would a red flag go up and say, just wait a minute? I think there needs to be some sort of further investigation here? Or somebody else brought in to look at this?
Through you, Mr. Chair to councillor Real. I think, as I said, designated substance review and abatement practices and everything else are none of our jurisdiction. We have zero involvement in that aspect of demolition at all.
I'm a little fuzzy here. I mean, you're at, you're being asked or we're being asked, our chief building officer to give a seal of approval for demolition. But there's a whole bunch of myriad of things that could happen because of the site itself or the history. So I'm, I'm a little fuzzy here where any power that we might have or anything that we can do. You tell me about legislation or what you're, what you are, but you're signing off on, on a demolition when you've been told tonight by several people, not just me, but somebody that's worked there that, of the contamination in the site itself. So I'm, I'm a little fuzzy here because there's two things being asked.
Through you, Mr. Chair to councillor.
Perhaps you could help with the, some clarity here.
The, as I've said, the, the Building Code Act, which the chief building official is appointed to enforce, has no involvement in environmental aspects on site. And I think that was even said here tonight. The people that have jurisdiction over elements of environmental contamination or particles or products of concern are the Ministry of Environment, Ministry of Labor, and even potentially the health unit. It's not the building division. That is not part of our assessment when issuing a permit. We have zero involvement in it, period.
Not to legal this, but how do we get them involved then? The agencies that you just talked about. You, you, you've now, let's say, I'm just hypothetically, you've signed off on a demolition. How do the rest of these entities become involved? Because there is, you, you've heard the caution or people raising issues here tonight, not only about the plant itself and the contaminants, but the neighborhood itself, what they feel they're going to be exposed to.
Through you, Mr. Chair to councillor Real. I can assure you that the Ministry of Environment and the Ministry of Labor have very robust enforcement practices. They have a lot of field personnel that specialize in this exact discipline. And we've encountered them on many sites throughout my career of 30 years. I've seen them present in small demolitions of buildings that have, you know, suspect materials in small towns to the city of Peterborough. We've dealt with them. We've done dozens of industrial demolitions in the city over my course of 20 years here. And there, they were as active then as they are now. And there is a process for them and it's their jurisdiction. It's not ours. Respectfully, it's not the city's. You're welcome, councillor.
Mr. Dugay, please, and councillor Burke. Councillor Dugay.
Uh, your worship, I'd like to call the question. May I clarify to the clerk though, because if, is it apply, can it apply to the separated or is it just the first item A or is it, can it be all three? Then it's all, please, thank you.
Councillor Dugay, I was hoping to speak before we call the question, but that's, that's fine too. No, councillor, councillor Burke, please. Oh, sorry, you put the question. We'll go to that. We're voting on moving to the question be put. And that is carried. We'll now, we'll now go to the vote. 11KA. Councillor Real's asked that we should put them all up. That's carried. 11KB.
Point of order?
Yes, councillor.
Thank you through you, your worship. My point of order is that this is out of order, as I spoke to previously, based on section four of the Heritage Act and what was imparted via the legal counsel provided by Stuart Hamilton. This is in effect suggesting that we delist the property as a whole. That is not the jurisdiction of council. It needs to come to PACAC for that to be determined and advised upon to council. Thank you. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking that it, it be deemed out of order and we vote on that. Thank you.
I deem that as in order. If we want to challenge the chair, we can challenge.
I would like to challenge the chair.
Absolutely. We'll go to a vote to sustain the chair.
Uh, thanks, your worship, just regarding the challenge to the chair so that the, the motion is that the decision of the chair be upheld. So if you, if a member wishes to support the decision of the chair, they would vote in the affirmative. If you wish to not support the decision, you would vote in the negative. And my colleague will cast the vote here, your worship.
And the decision of the chair has been sustained. We'll now vote on 11KB. And that is carried. We'll now go to 11C. And that's carried and 11KD at the amendment. And that was carried unanimously, 11D. We have, we have no notice of motion. We have bylaws, 13A, B and C, 25116 to 251EB. Somebody would like to move it? Councillor Beamer? Councillor Faciliatus? We'll go to a vote. And that's carried. Just under your business, I want to assure members of council, I'll be reaching out to the Minister of the Environment ASAP and all, all the items that were addressed tonight about the Ministry of Labor, the full weight of the EPA. I will ask through that request to the minister and to David Smith that we can sit down as soon as possible to discuss these items in relation to GE. Um, and for, for those that say it's not personal, let me tell, let me tell you a very personal story. There was somebody that I love dearly who retired from GE in April of 1982 after 40 years' service. He died of lung cancer in October of 1983. My recent, that was my dad. So anybody around this table that doesn't think that I don't understand this issue, you're dead wrong. Dead wrong. And I also dealt with all the WSIB cases. You know what it's like sitting in an office when a widow says to you that my husband had a death from esophageal cancer? The most painful death that one can endure from cancer? And I don't understand? I understand it very well. And nobody, nobody that I know has monopoly on virtue that they care more than others. We'll have a confirmation bylaw, 15A25119. Somebody like to move that? Councillor Crowley? Councillor Beamer? We'll go to a vote. That's carried. Attentionment to councillor Hakey. Councillor Beamer, we'll go to a vote. I'll get them next week. Thank you colleagues, thank you staff, thank you audience.